Thank you for joining us this evening for the January twenty first, twenty point five, Montesorino Regularity Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called the order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to inform technical issues since we're unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you very much. And everybody please stand and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Mayan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shannon, here. Councilmember Mekka Chukwem.
Present.
Councilmember Walshimer.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lahe.
Here.
Mayor Kay.
Here. Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? Would anybody like to move an agenda item or change the orders? As being done, we are going to move to announcements and I'm going to start off with a hopefully quick announcement, although I timed it a little over a minute or so. And I'm going to read it, so I do it right. We are devastated by the tragic situation unfolding in Southern California, and our hearts go out to those who are affected by the recent fire. We extend our deepest gratitude to the brave fire personnel from across the state, the country, and even other countries who have joined forces to combat this devastating blaze. Your courage and dedication is truly inspiring. As your mayor, I want to assure you that our city's top priority is ensuring the safety and preparedness of our community in the face of emergencies. We have a comprehensive disaster preparedness plan in place, and we will be conducting a thorough review of it in collaboration with our public safety partners, the Los Gatos Monte Serrano Police Department and the Santa Clara County Fire Department. We have received a lot of emails from concerned citizens, and we appreciate the engagement and the feedback during this time. So keep them coming because we're collecting them all and I pass them on to our city manager and and we're going to be taking a look at all of them and making sure that we get all the questions answered. I encourage all residents to visit our city's emergency preparedness webpage, and there's even an article on our homepage that will help you get to it even easier. This resource provides an overview of our city's preparedness efforts and their valuable information to help you prepare for emergencies. Has anybody ever found our emergency preparedness page? Raise your hand. Yes, our new resident has. Thank you very much. One of the most important steps you can take to protect yourself and your loved ones is to subscribe to Alert SCC, which is the Santa Clara County's Emergency Alert System. This service ensures that you will receive timely notifications in the event of an emergency. Additionally, take some time to create or update your own disaster preparedness plan. Key steps included, and I'm not going to go through the whole list of them, but here's a few of them that I hear a lot of people talking about. Packing a go bag. Don't forget your medications. Have your essential items ready to take with you in case of a quick evacuation. As you probably heard with the fires down south, some people had as little as five minutes to get up and get out. So make a priority list. Prepare a list of items you would take with you if you only had thirty minutes to leave your home. It's amazing when you ask somebody, what are you going to take with you? And they're like, well, gee, I take pictures or you know, what about that little statue I got for a wedding present? It really helps if you have a list. Plan for your evacuation. Know where you're going to go in the event of an evacuation and how you will get there. And I even want to go a little bit further by keeping by by really encouraging people to keep abreast of the situation. If you get hints of any type of possible fire emergency, one of the things that that we've discussed in our company is that you can take one of your cars and park it at our company parking lot. Most people have an extra car that they can take there. Or if not, this is a good time to have your family share one car while you get the other one out of the disaster area and put it somewhere where it will be valuable to you at that time. And last, consider your pets. Make arrangements for your pets in case of an evacuation. Tomorrow is a great day to start hardening your home by clearing flammable vegetation from around your property. Again, see our emergency preparedness webpage for more information about the Community Wildlife Safety Program. The city also offers an email newsletter that you can subscribe to for the latest updates from City Hall. This again is a great way to stay informed about important developments and events in our city. On March the fourth, the Santa Clara County Fire Department will present their semi-annual report. So that's the meeting after two meetings, I'm sorry. So the first meeting in March, the Santa Clara County Fire Department will be here. And this will be an excellent opportunity to hear directly from our fire safety experts about the latest developments and to pose questions to them. As I mentioned earlier, we are collecting all questions that are coming from emails and and just conversations we're having with the public, and we are going forward to them about a week in advance so that they can be prepared to answer questions because we have different circumstances than than somebody in Campbell, for instance. Your safety is our top priority. We can ensure you that our community remains resilient and prepared for any challenges that we may face. Thank you for your commitment and your readiness and for being an integral part of our city's strength. Lastly, I would like to encourage everyone to give whatever they can to an organization that they work with to help those down south. Every little bit will help. And last, please consider becoming a CERT member. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. There's more information about CERT on our website. And that is my announcements for tonight, and I understand that Councilmember Obama has a announcement for us.
Yes. Many of you know that John Steinbeck wrote, he completed Of Mice and Men here in what what's now Monte Serrano in the Steinbeck House. And he wrote all of the great Serat there. And there was a sign that was on the gate leading into his home that he carved in the early thirties. And in a very generously former council member Joel Gambord donated the sign to the city of Monte Serrano. And so
That's nice.
And this is amazing that John Steinbeck carved the sign. And it's going to be mounted here. But I wanted everyone to see it and I am going to take the sign down to Carmel and show Joel what it looks like because it's very important to him. And and then it'll be mounted here, but the problem that I had is that there's a fire at Moss Landing, and I just wasn't able to make it down there. I had intended to do so. But I I would like the minutes to show that the sign was here and completed. So that's my announcements.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements from the council members or staff? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to presentations. Do we have any presentations for tonight? And then that will then take us to oral communications. Any member of the public can come up and speak for three minutes about any topic that is not on the agenda. Unfortunately, we won't be able to respond to any questions, but staff will be listening and writing down all of your questions and concerns. And former Mayor Lon Allen, come up, say hello, introduce yourself to the fans.
Yeah, Lon Allen. I sent a photograph to the members of the council. Last last meeting, Kevin pointed out that some drivers were using the speed bumps of Dave's Avenue. Dave's Avenue was a slum course. And Councilmember Walshimer said that he almost got brought over by someone driving in the bike lane. On Allendale, they solved the problem. They have a little bit more foot post. I'll have the photograph, and I'm sure for taking a couple hundred dollars out of petty cash, we could avoid injury to either pedestrians or bike riders on Dave's Avenue. And I know it's not on the agenda, so the council can't take action, but I hope in the council, hopefully on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Jackson, I saw your hand go up too.
It's going to take me a minute to stand up. First.
We won't start the timer until you get up.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your comments earlier. I essentially had mine written down. Should we get to the topic?
Oh, yes.
But I will thank you for these. First name is Don Jackson. I'm a former council member and mayor of Monte Serrano. And one of my priorities when I was mayor was hillside safety. We're all aware of the potential disasters and fires that are occurring right now in Southern California. Almost three decades ago, when I served on the council, our city prepared a comprehensive informational booklet on disaster preparedness. This is the only one left, I think. I believe in reviewing it, I believe that we need to upgrade it and update it and then give it out. And it would be something that would sort of be along with our, you know, plan that you have on on the web. My hope is that we better inform our citizens, planning relating, planning relating to improving our disaster infrastructure and enhancing the likelihood the likelihood to effectively deploy these disaster resources. It is the hope that the council will take appropriate action in creating and operating a comprehensive plan with the super mason, making it available to all our residents. One of the things that was really great about what we did, we set up an exit area, ingress and egress for the whole city, and we coded it into this booklet. I'm not sure if any of these booklets are left, but if they are, I think we should all look at them again, and we can use them as a printed and a hands-on thing that they can put with their disaster folder. I have one extra that I had done today to pass it on to the council. But if you look at it, there are a number of roads that are in the city right now that are not even on that map. So it is my hope that we can do something about it and maybe establish a committee that would work with the fire department and the police department and council to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alana, tell them.
Hi, Melissia Seidler. I think I know you all at least a little bit. I'm also wanting to talk about fire safety. I appreciate your comments earlier. I think it's great. We're going to have the fire department here in March. I'll try and come to that. I I think some of the things you mentioned are a great idea. I also, when I look at it, think, you know, probably a lot of these communities that burned down also had, you know, communication about go bags and you know, they certainly had fire departments and everything else. And I think we can definitely go through these steps we're talking about, but I think we have to be also be pragmatic and realistic that if a fire came up here quickly, everyone would dump out on our two evacuation routes and get stuck, and that's just what would happen. And you know, if it were fast-moving people, some would probably die in their cars. So I think it's super important that we look for other ways out. Highway nine in the summer because of the beach traffic, I already, that's how I try and get to Safeway, and it'll take me fifteen minutes to get to Safeway, and that's without a fire. That's just kind of day-to-day travel. So with a fire, no one's going anywhere, especially if it's beach traffic. So I think we need to, when the city was developed, there were so many fewer people. And the road network just does not accommodate the people we have now, and I think we need to look for other ways out. If there are areas where even if we bought an easement, maybe when a home changes hands and added an additional points of emergency egress. I think functionally, practically, that is the only way to reduce the likelihood of deaths in a fire. And also, Highway nine, like, that's my only way out. It's got eighty-some eucalyptus. They're stacked together much like dominoes. You know, in in a fire, the whole road would just light up, and then none of us can get out, and that's where our fire station is too. But in a wind-driven fire, you just can't keep up. So I think we need a citizens committee, you know, perhaps, you know, through city council that's focused exclusively on improving fire safety and egress. And because some of these are long-term projects where we're going to have to do a little research and see what the options are, they aren't things that can be accomplished with, you know, one conversation. And there are those of us that have a lot of interest in seeing what we can do. I'm one. There are many others. And I would donate lots of my time, but I think we need to do it in an organized fashion, so it's not just us pelting you all with emails. Let's see.
We'll need you to start rapidly developing.
Oh, and oh, so just two two big things. We need to reduce the trees on Highway nine. We need to look for other ways out.
Great. Thank you so much. And and I agree with you a hundred percent on the roads. In fact, an earlier draft of my of my statement was, start working out because you may find yourself having to walk out of here.
Right.
So, but that's how I said it, so. Okay, yes, ma'am, in the back. There are two of you. Great.
Hi, my name is Tony Dela Cruz, and I am the Public Information and Engagement Officer with the Los Gatos Saratoga Unit High School District.
And I'm Tru Subhan, and I'm a trustee of the high school district.
Yes, and we wanted to just share with you that at our board meeting last Tuesday, our board passed a resolution to begin the transition, shifting us from an at-large election election system to a by-trustee election system. And what that means is right now, if you were to vote for an open candidate position, no matter where you live in our hundred-and-forty-six-mile district, you could vote for any candidate. Shifting us to a by-trustee candidate means that you would just be able to vote for the trustee that lives in your drawn boundaries. And one of the benefits of that that we see is in this really large district, we want to make sure that we have voices and people who represent all the different geographic areas of the district and not just consolidated into maybe one part of the district. So we are starting our public hearing at our board meeting next Tuesday, January twenty eighth, and we wanted to invite you and any other residents who have an interest in this topic to come out before we start the maps and give feedback on things that you might be thinking about for your area that you want to be considering, Monte Serrano, what parts of Saratoga or Los Angeles, or anything you might be thinking. We also are opening up for people to submit their own maps to our demographers. Am I missing anything?
And I just wanted to add, other like schools that have done this are high schools, Lindbrook High, Homestead High, Cupertino High, Montevista High, Fremont High. So we will not be alone in moving to this type of elections. And I just want to add a different topic that you should, on the fire topic. We, for the first time, have been able to negotiate with the Los Gatos Lodge New Developers and Emergency Road out the back of the high school on the Highway nine. This is a huge accomplishment. It's something that the fire department has long wanted, and we have to. And the way I understand that it will work, they can build one hundred units, but on unit one oh one, if the if the emergency road is not complete, they cannot continue.
Oh, wow.
So please join us in celebrating that for our kids, their safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know if there's a place we could leave the fire, give it with you. So there's a QR code and that takes you to a website that has frequently asked questions and has our timeline if anyone's interested.
Thank you. Can I ask you real, real quick, which district will there be?
Um.
There will be five.
Five.
Five. So one for each trustee that's currently on the board.
Yeah, and we're lucky right now. Our trustees are pretty spread out. We have two in Saratoga and three in Los Gatos, but there's not guarantee that it's always going to end up that way. So that's what I think is a bit, we have a big benefit.
And there's a presentation online from our meeting last week. If you wanted to go in and look at it, it gives the population, the voting population, and some figures on it, but it really is just an introduction to the process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're going to resist. There you go.
Yes, Mary. Why didn't, well, we'll let them pass you down and then.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Alana.
I think, ma'am, my name is Donna Tam, and I'm a Monte Serrano resident. I live between Eaton and Vineland on Winchester, and I wanted to actually bring up the topic about actually just safety on the roads. I run often nearly daily every morning, and, you know, we all know that people are just really blasting down Winchester. And actually, just this morning, I was, and I always, as I'm running towards Dave's, I will always look left and behind me before I cross, for example, you know, Creekside, Vineland, Blanchard, Vineland, and a car, and I've I've seen this car before. I was halfway, almost halfway past. There was no car behind me, so I kept running, and there was a car who actually went around me onto the the X, you know, onto the exit lane, around the, you know, the concrete median, back into the right-hand lane, and that one scared the bejesus out of me. Second of all, it just irritated me so much because I know time over time, I see children walking to and from Dave's families, and you know, people aren't looking. They're driving past the stop sign, not looking left. We really got to do something. If I know there's a, I think there's a traffic, I think a speed sensor near Dave's, but I don't know if we can get more, maybe just some more police staff just sitting on the side of Winchester, just monitoring speeds, because this is not safe, and it just really hit home this morning, and I don't want to get emotional, but I mean, it was just very frightening, and I just would never want anyone to experience this. So I'm not sure if I should bring this up with the, I think there's a like Streets and Safety Committee, but this is something I wanted to bring up to the city because on Vineland, on Dave's, we've all seen the people that drive, like, you know, it's Highway seventeen, and it's just not safe. There's construction going on. There's children and just people that can't move fast enough to dodge a, you know, two-ton vehicle. So just wanted to bring that up, and if that's something, maybe I can help drive or, you know, help educate. I'm happy to help and you know, just try to make a difference and find a solution.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Okay, would anybody else like to come up and it was three minutes of your valuable time? Okay, so then we're going to move on to our, yes.
Have a hand raised.
Oh, we do.
Hi, can you hear me? Uh, barely. Yes.
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for your comments regarding the fires in LA. Before moving here, we lived in the Palisades for fifteen years. The home in which we raised our kids and our neighborhood has been completely destroyed. Our kids' schools, our church, everything. All of our friends and neighbors lost their homes. They all left believing they will be coming back. Yesterday, I finally saw pictures of what was left of our old home, and I am sure you have seen the apocalyptic images. Firsthand stories from my friends that you should hear. Fire response was severely delayed. The evacuation was chaotic. The main arteries in and out of the Palisades were clogged with traffic. Some of my friends had to leave by bike. Others, it took ninety minutes to go one mile. People left their cars in a panic and took their keys. Firefighters had to bring in bulldozers to move the cars so they can get through. Sixty-nine percent of insurance policies in the Palisades were canceled a couple of months ago due to extreme risk. Insurers told their wealthiest clients that they would have to hire private firefighters to remain insured. The level of destruction of the Palisades fire was preventable. The city slashed the fire department's budget, which led to canceled brush clearance, emptied the San Diego Reservoir for maintenance that never occurred, canceled routine hydrant maintenance, left one hundred fire trucks idle because the city couldn't afford to maintain them, and reduced personnel and resources. The fire chief warned the city for over a year that they did not have enough resources to fight wildfires. Other factors: When SoCal Edison shut off power, that included the power to the hydrant pumps, rendering them useless. SoCal Edison planned to replace wooden power poles with fire-resistant poles a few years ago, but that work was canceled to environmentalist outrage. Poor decisions led to the ultimate destruction of my old community. How can we be sure such decisions aren't being made here in Santa Clara County? This is why it is important we, as a city, can answer the following questions. Is county fire fully funded and prepared? Who maintains our hydrants and how often? Does the police department have an established evacuation traffic mitigation plan, and what is it? Will Cal Fire's Alma helipad be operational during the relocation project happening in 2025? How many residents have lost their fire insurance? What is the feasibility cost of private fire services for those residents? Are they aware of this option? How can we help county fire identify additional water resources in Monte Serrano in the event hydrants are inadequate? What building material requirements can we change in our codes to prevent structural loss? These are some of the questions I believe a city commission dedicated to wildfire safety can dive into and create a city evacuation safety plan. Allison has great ideas. Having a booklet is not enough. As we have witnessed with the Palisades and Eaton fires, we cannot assume help will come in a timely fashion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Liz. Do we have anybody else online?
No other hands or rates.
Okay. All right, then with that, we are going to move to written communications. And, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mekka Chukwem wanted to respond to some of the oral communication.
Yeah, I don't want to dig into it too much, but Liz Lawler raised a great point when she talked about the fire resiliency of houses and buildings, and that I think is absolutely critical in the end, what's in the code. So I don't want to dig into that, but I also want to point out that on August the eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Matthew Hudes, Vice Mayor of Los Gatos, and myself went on a ninety-minute tour of the roads in Los Gatos and Monte Serrano in terms of beach traffic and evacuation routes and safety. So this is, has been raised at the VTA level with Carolyn Gannett, who's the CEO. So this is on their radar, and I and I was at a VTA meeting, and I can talk about that later, but but this is extremely topical. And when I looked at the devastation in the suburban Palisades, I thought that that's what it would look like after a nuclear bomb went off. I mean, it it was just horrible what I saw. So anyways, I I just wanted to acknowledge the comments and and let people know about that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I I really welcome your comments. I mean, go right on. And you you basically explored a lot of things that need to be done, and you have the emergency site also. So the thing is, we do concentrate on when a major event happens. This isn't the first big fire. The Paris, the Paradise fires, and that happened, we had a discussion, and then after a while, our memory kind of is short, so you're welcome. So, yeah, I I think I welcome the idea of setting up committees and conditions and really move forward aggressively on it. We have to deal not with our own resources, but also make sure other bureaucracies that are out there at the state that controls the heritage, you know, how do they respond to cutting down some of the streets and making it safer for us? So so we'll have to get together and move on. So thank you. Thank you all for bringing that up. Thank you.
I'd like to make sure. Comment on that same topic also that regards to fire safety. Ever since I rejoined the council two years ago, I've brought up this topic many, many times in various situations. And I'm very frustrated to see that. And I'm very frustrated to see that nothing has happened. Um, and the reason is because there's so many different agencies and organizations are involved. They're all pointing at each other and nobody's doing anything. So personally, I'm extremely frustrated about the situation. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. Uh, let's see, then let's um, go to our consent calendar. We have a number of items on the consent calendar. Oh.
Um, but there's, but there's no new additional.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody like to pull an item from the consent calendar? We'd like to pull item three. All right, would any members of the public like to pull an item from the consent calendar? And I know that if you actually have the ability to do that. Okay.
I'd like to, um, no, that's just, so you pull an item, but make a comment on the item number two.
Okay, uh, let's see, I just wanna make sure nobody else wants to pull an item. All right, so. Uh, go ahead and make a comment on item number two.
On the warrant list, uh, there's an item there, bay alarm. Uh, three thousand dollars for fire alarm uh, for six months. I personally have bay alarm also and I pay three hundred dollars per half, for six months. So. Why is the city paying ten times as much for a building that's smaller than my house? Uh, this seems, this seems to be overly uh, excessive, three thousand dollars for six months.
Um, I do, I do know that the commercial rates um, are different than single family. The systems are more complicated. But we can certainly reach out to them and ask for some fluidity in that.
Okay, and I also know we just had an extensive uh, rework of the alarm system in the, in the uh. Building too, correct?
Yes, it is a complete in-flight alarm system.
Okay, but this is just for service, it's not for any of the equipment or, or um, updates that were made?
Correct, that was for, um, the, the approximately three thousand dollars is for the monitoring fee from September twenty-seventh to April thirtieth.
Okay, so that's a semi-annual fee then.
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Um, I just wanna note there's been two false alarms recently with the fire system. Um, so I don't know if that's related to the fact that some work has just been done on it. What's that?
We've called for, for a service.
Till they can see what's, what's happening, okay.
Okay. Hold on, hold on one second. And I'm now going to open it for public comment. Mr. Allen.
Well, uh, I would just want to second what, uh, council member. I'm with Honeywell. And I just got the bill for six months, uh, for two hundred and ninety-six dollars. And again, my house is larger than City Hall and monitoring is monitoring. I don't see why. The rates uh, for a commercial structure, why it's harder to monitor than a rate for a. A residential structure and also I would think that, uh. In the last few years, there've been a number of residential burglaries at Montesereno and I'm not aware that City Hall's been burglarized.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public about the consent items? Seeing that, I will entertain a motion to approve items one and two.
So, oh, yes, I'll, I'd like to abstain from two, so if you do the one.
Okay, so then we will entertain a motion for approving item one on the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number two, I have a motion to approve it.
So moved.
So moved.
A second.
And we have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And one abstain. And then for item three, can we have a staff report on that, please, or, or council members? Would you like to?
Yeah, it's, it's a quick, quick comment, maybe we could solve it. I, I saw the finance committee being formed and I think that's an excellent idea. I just wanted to see if you could add one more comment on it because the thing that keeps coming up in these warrant lists is the amount we are paying consultants. Uh, some of them are getting paid like five, six thousand dollars a week and, you know, I'm sure it's justified. But could we add something where the finance committee reviews invoices and either approves, rejects, or makes a recommendation on those? Uh, as to whether that's appropriate or what we are being charged. I had a question, and I met with the city manager. Um, if they look at all the ten ninety-nines that have been issued over the last few years for different consultants, so if you could get an handle on consultant, please. So I, I'd like to add that to one of the tasks. That's, that the finance committee will perform.
Uh, yes.
Um, I think in general, the idea behind this current um, finance ad hoc committee that we're looking to set in that tonight. Is more along the lines of getting our financial systems really um, up and running, getting the internal controls really together. Um, some of these things with the contracts, it's up to the city manager to be monitoring those things and making sure that we are paying. Um, amounts that are within the contract, then that they are correct and if they're not correct, I think it's up to the manager to. Um, be making some of those decisions or, or bringing things to council if she wants to bring them to council. But I didn't see us monitoring all the payments and checking all the bills as really um, our best use for this finance ad hoc.
And um, I just also wanted to make a quick comment that the finance committee or any committee that is formed is only in place for a year. So I don't know if, if this would be the proper task for them. And then my, my question for the city manager is that. Um, at, at, at what contract level does the contract actually come to council? Because don't we re, review or submit it somewhere, either in the consent items or as an agenda item, whenever we're signing a contract? Or consultant? So I think we all have that kind of, that, that kind of oversight already, correct?
Um, yes, for professional service contracts, the threshold is twenty-five thousand dollars for the overall contract amount. So anything over that amount would go to council. Um, that threshold does allow us, um. Staff wise, for example, we have a, a consultant who's filling in the engineering department for the vacant city engineer position. So we weren't able, staff was able to approve a contract for that consultant quickly to get the person on board. Um, probably in a month or two, when, when their expenses start to reach that twenty-five thousand dollar limit, the contract will be brought to council for. For review or approval over that threshold.
Okay. Yes, council member Mekichuk.
Yeah, I've got a, a comment on that. I think as, as council member Shannon said. Well, we're looking at what the ad hoc committee, uh, their, their charter is to do, is to look at internal controls and systems. And then if we have recommendations, then we'll bring those forth. But one of the things that has bothered me for quite some time is exactly that, the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. And I believe, you know, just kinda go on a limb here, from what I've seen over the past few years. Even if the contract is less than twenty-five thousand, it should come to council. Uh, as not for approval, but for an, an understanding of that's what's going on. So, but, but I, I think we, the, if, if the ad hoc committee is approved, then. Um, I think that's for the ad hoc committee to, to discuss and bring forward to council. And I, I, I hope that would address the concern that uh, was raised, but, and, and I'll, I will also underscore. We being the ad hoc committee are not an internal control mechanism, okay?
So then what I would suggest is that we entertain a motion and vote on this item. And I'm sure during future agenda items, somebody will suggest. That, or the finance committee and their reporting will probably suggest that we take a look at our. Uh, and how we re, how we review lower-priced contracts.
If, if I can make a comment for that.
Yeah.
So my objective wasn't really to go with city manager does, but there, the warrant list comes in and we almost approve it, most of the while we look at something else. The consulting uh, fees are a big challenge. We never really get to review that. We know what the allowed is, amount is, but we don't really get to review that. Now, is it okay to pay somebody, you know, ten thousand dollars a week to do certain things or not? Uh, I, I don't know if the finance committee is a good way to, uh, redo that and keep some idea on it. City manager's got a handful with a lot of stuff and I know she gets a chance to look at every invoice, whether it comes from a, a accountant or an attorney even. Or from any other source and gets, gets some picture on it. I mean, who's looking at those hours of the billing and all that? And I know in the past, there have been bills that, you know, you wonder whether this person was even doing anything. Or if they had another job working someplace else. So we need to put something in place to monitor those, right? Finance committee is not the way to do it and I told me, you know, I know you're a handful and you don't necessarily look at, you need to look at each and every voice, but just look at the big one. So okay, what's going on here and look at it once in a while. Use a simple priority control way of looking at two things out of a hundred to see what's going in. That's why I thought it was important to bring that up.
Okay, I, I don't wanna drill into this, but since you raised the point, I do wanna address your concerns. Um, the, I believe that what we will do is look at the policy. And where the first, and the procedures and say, hey, uh, in certain instances. You know, the, the rates have to be verified, but I will also say. That we have been the, the subject of, of uh, incorrect billing. And it is supposed to be reviewed, the, the, before a check is cut, before a payment is authorized. The internal control should be to verify the rate to the contract, the number of hours or whatever the quantity is. To the work that was done, verify the calculations before approving the invoice for payment. And that was not done. Appropriately in the past. But we will be looking at that and we will report back to council.
Well, it's a good answer. But we take care of it. I mean, uh, we remember this, we'll be here to talk a lot at some point.
I can just add that, um, each invoice that is on the warrant list is approved by myself and then also reviewed by our. On finance accountant before the, the, before it appears on the warrant list and before the check is, is issued.
So then, for example, if it's a contract for engineering services, would our engineer look at it and then send it to the finance consultant and then teach you?
Yes.
Okay, so multiple people are looking at these invoices before they're getting approved for, for payment.
That is correct, although certainly additional review process or, or additional um. Information that staff can provide on the contracts.
Exactly, yeah, and, and you're doing an excellent job, but wanna take it out of just, you know, one person at the end. And, 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 and not to pick on you, but all the invoices that I submitted to the city and the manager, not just you. Has any invoice ever been rejected or cut down?
Um, I don't know of any invoice that has been rejected. There has been a couple of invoices from consultants that have been. And adjusted where, um, the original intended scope of work was, was not needed, so the scope of work was reduced. But their invoice didn't hook onto that. And that would happen before it would appear on the warrant.
All right.
Just one comment about that, probably this will also give you some satisfaction. Uh, my understanding is, is I've seen the, the package of checks or paper checks that Diana receives with the support. Attached to each check, so she's able to see the amount, you know, the invoice and capable to review it in that way. And again, as Brian just stated, looking at these controls, these procedures is a part of what is our charter. And that should give you satisfaction that somebody looked at appropriately.
Like I said, that's gonna be the nanny, so just keep, keep all in mind, see what's going on and you guys can bring it back at the end.
All right, so at this point, would anybody like to make a motion to approve item three? I'll make a motion to approve item three. Like, do you have a second calendar? We have a second, second. All right, all in favor? Let's do a roll call.
Council member Mekichuk.
All right.
Council member Wolshimer.
Yes.
Council member Shannon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lucky.
Yes.
And Mayor Cray.
Yes. Right, so that will take us to public hearings and we are going to actually move item number four. We have some issues with um, the posting of the notice for the weed abatement, so we will be moving that to our.
Do we wanna ensure there's, I wanted to look for this item?
There is somebody here. There is somebody here taking that okay. I thought you were just coming here, but you just wanted to see how we operate.
Yeah, but it helped that I had an agenda item, um, I.
Okay, well, well, hang on one sec, I'm going to, to just say, uh, because we did not do a, uh. That there was an issue with the posting, and so we will be moving this item to a future meeting, probably the March fourth meeting. And so, but at this time, we wanted to allow anybody who was here to ask any questions or make any comments about item four. Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna open this up for public comment now, so come on up and introduce yourself and.
Go up there?
Yes, please. Yeah, you didn't know you were gonna be on stage.
Yes, I, I, I thought I could hide in the back. Uh, my name is Para Daily. I recently moved to Montesereno, uh, it was a lovely community. And uh, I'm glad to hear some of my other neighbors speaks about some of the fire safety things, we've already covered that. The reason um, I came is because I understand that there were some kind of assessments made and certain parcels received a notice regarding the weed abatement program. My, also one of the parcels that received it. Um, I'd like to understand how parcels were determined by it. Um, cause mine is a brand-new home that the city just probably approved the permits for, uh, not even a year ago. So I'm thinking setbacks and those things have already been reviewed by the city, you know, trees and things like that. So I'd like to understand what was in the assessment. Could I get a copy of the assessment to understand why was it put on? Why the parcel was put on the program. Um, so because I couldn't identify except for a little bit of dead grass, nothing else was dead, so I was not sure. What was the level uh, on which it was?
Especially on a new project. Well, uh, what I'm going to do is direct you to our.
So, actually. Um, so those questions are great, actually, we don't, because this was gonna be moved to another meeting. Uh, the weed abatement program coordinator that was gonna be present is not here tonight to answer, but I was gonna ask you if you could. Email me with your name, um, we can have you, I can connect both of you guys.
Okay.
So that way she could answer, you know, all your questions, um, in regards to how, you know, it was determined that. Your property wasn't in compliance with, uh, with that, yeah, so.
I'll, I'll also explain very quickly that this is not a city program.
Yeah.
This is a county program, so it's the county that will uh, put your property on the list and then they pass it to the city. And all we do is approve for them to um, have your house on the list.
Okay.
So that's, that's just the real basics of it, but yes, get it, but to our city clerk and she'll get more details for you.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions on item four from the public? Is there anybody online?
No hands or wrists.
Okay, so this item will be continued to a future meeting and we're going to move on to item number five. And that is to authorize the infant city manager to execute an agreement with. The block safety group for the installation and maintenance of automated license plate readers. Providing coverage to the city of Montesereno. Who's gonna handle this staff report on that one?
Um, I have it, thank you.
City manager is gonna do that, thank you.
Um, this item is a follow-up from the last council meeting, where council directed staff to provide some additional information. Um, on the draft agreement with block, um, to provide for automated license plate readers in Monastrena. The additional information requested was about a potential civil rights and governance application from block. Um, questions about these existing privately funded block cameras that are located within the city. And um, general privacy concerns with the campus. So that additional information is detailed in the staff report and the attachments to the staff report. Uh, the staff is recommending tonight that council first determine if executing an agreement with the block safety group is desired. And if so, if that agreement should be for the budgeted number of cameras, which was seven. Or whether the agreement should include two additional cameras and one flex mobile camera. Um, if the council does authorize the agreement, um, the second information to be made is the timing of the installation. Um if the council does authorize the agreement, um the second information to be made is the timing of the installation. Um the installation can be given as quickly as possible and capable with the funds that are included in the current fiscal year budget. Alternatively, the installation can be delayed until after July first of this year, which would allow the initial installation costs of approximately sixty thousand or seventy two thousand dollars, depending on the number of cameras, to be paid from next year's state funds through the supplemental law enforcement service fund. Uh and that would save sixty to seventy two thousand dollars from the city's general fund. Um that completes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So just to recap, at our last meeting, sounds like a TV show, our last episode. It's, and I'm just gonna summarize and let me know if I'm wrong. There seemed to be a desire from not only the council, but from the members of the public who came to speak in favor of installing flock cameras in our city. And then there was one concern that we should look into, which was flock offering us indemnification. So that if we were to have a lawsuit filed against the city, that flock would indemnify us. And we were informed that the only indemnification that flock offers is up to the cost of services that we've paid that particular year. That correct? Or 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 the cost of the camera?
Two years. They would use two years. But it's specifically for um damage and liability associated, which we can't, there's nothing, nothing beyond that. So the maximum would be two years, nothing specific to civil rights violations.
Or any other violations that somebody might want to sue us, as we know, we live in a society that takes a lot of lot of uh things personally and are willing to fight for what they feel is is right in their own minds. So so essentially, we don't have indemnification for anything outside of an accidental um damage or injury that would be caused by a flock camera breaking or falling down on somebody.
Correct.
Okay.
And and that line in the staff report, their position is that um the case that came out of Virginia that we talked about is really an aberration. That's not consistent with the um previous case law and that the taking an image of a um license plate and doing nothing more than that is not a violation of the Fourth Amendment. Um further, their position is that any violations that occur don't occur due to any act that they have taken, but instead by the police department. Um and that they don't manage or control them, so they should not be liable. However, we have a provision in the contract that requires them to comply with all state, federal and local laws. And so if they were found to be in violation of the constitution, that that provision would be triggered and they would be in breach. So that is one avenue that we would have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Yes, councilmember Alon.
Uh thank you for the staff report. I think you've done a great job on satisfying the concerns that I had, especially on the civil rights issue. Uh it's good to stand stand out there. Uh the the thing that I want to get to, probably take a deeper dive to see what's going on. This is a two-year contract. And that it can be renewed automatically, I believe, for another two years. Uh and I assume the price is the same for the second extension or does that go up? The one thing that that I found that not troubling, but something to look at, was that they can give us sixty days notice and increase the price. And if he, if they increase the price, I hopefully they won't be unreasonable about it, but it there is, is there a way to cap that? So we know, because we're stuck with paying the first sixty thousand to get it installed, a hundred thousand. The first years we've been stuck with, and if in two years, I assume we have a right to renew it and they cannot raise the price, if we can verify that. But if in two years they so so let's say we go four years. So maybe four years is good enough to do our initial investment. But if after four years they raise the price where it's not manageable for us to pay it, uh they can just take the whole thing and go away and we've lost our initial investment. So I'm trying to figure out if there's something to address that or limit how much they can raise the price.
There is not currently a cap on any extensions. Um let me see. Maybe we do have Tariq on the line. Yes, Chris might know, but we may look as well.
Yes, I apologize. I neglected to mention in the report that we do have our um representatives from Flock, um both Tariq Bright and um Kristen McCloud, as well as Captain Albert from the police department. If there's questions, we'll do them.
Okay, great. So Tariq, uh did you hear the question from councilmember Alahi?
Hi, Mayor. Uh yes, and hello, uh council. Um if if I heard correctly, he was curious to know um if there is any kind of um lock-in on the pricing schedule. Is that, does that sound correct?
Yeah.
Um so yes, at the current price point, you guys would be a two-year contract, so uh the price point would be locked in for the next two years. Uh if there was a price increase, you would not be affected until it became time to renew. Uh we do have the option to lengthen the contract, like if you wanted to go with a four or five-year contract at this time, to ensure that that price increase does not take place. We do have the option of doing so. Um however, if there is a price increase after that two-year term, uh there would be subject to that price increase.
I want to ask you, yeah, I just wanted to follow up. So you're saying after two years you can raise the price? Because we do have a renewal term of two years in your invoice. Does that mean that second two-year could be at whatever price you then select?
Uh what I'm saying is is that if there is a price increase, yes, you will be notified of that price increase. Um I'm not saying that we have a planned price increase, like we 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 had a price increase, I think, uh a year or so ago. Um so to my knowledge, I don't foresee another price increase. However, I cannot guarantee that, obviously. That's above my pay grade. Um but uh if there was a price increase, we would notify you um and you would not be subject to that until after that. The the current contract would be completed.
Yeah, no, I I got that part. How much was your last price increase?
Say again, I'm sorry?
How much did you increase the price last time? Because I know there were people here last time who mentioned that what we were paying was much higher than what they had been paying.
Uh yeah, so the 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 last increase went up uh five hundred dollars per camera per year. Uh and that was our first in price increase of the seven years that we've been um uh present.
So.
That was really, in and the purpose for that increase was really due to the expansion. We went from, you know, a couple of small agencies utilizing flock services to just about every agency within the US, especially within California. Uh and with that, obviously, there, you know, it incorporates more costs with data storage and things of that sort. So uh that was the reason for the price increase um that took place about a year ago.
Yeah, no, I fully understand that. There is inflation, there's gonna be cost increases. You are gonna raise the price. I'm just trying to figure out if you can put a cap on the increase. So just a five percent cap or would that be an issue?
Uh I that there is no language for cap that I'm aware of. Um I have not seen that been been presented prior. Um I can get back with you and check with my legal team and see if that's something that they're willing to do. Um Kirsten, is that something that you saw there in the uh M S A or?
Yeah, there there is nothing about the renewal um period as relates to the rates. So it would, if other than it be sixty days. There's no, there's no cap, there's no um limitation on what that increase could be.
And and there's a choice with me to do a fiber contract.
Right.
Right? Okay. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Uh I have a question.
Yes, councilmember Shannon.
Hi, um I have a question regarding the cameras and let's see if I understand how the process works. Because if the city installs these cameras, it's the Las Gatos Montesorino Police Department who will be monitoring them. And they would notify you if something's not working correctly? Or would flock already be aware if a camera is down or is not working? And the reason I ask this question specifically is because I was talking to a resident that um is in a community where they purchased their own block cameras. And they've had some frustrations with cameras not working and they're not aware they're not working. And when they go back to retrieve data, there's nothing there. And this apparently happened several times. So ultimately, my question is, if we install cameras, how do we know that the cameras are working at all times?
Yes, thank you so much for for that question. So as far as block proactively monitors the health of your camera, um and we will also our law enforcement customers will also notify us if they are experiencing a particular issue with the platform. Um so it's really um kind of all hands on deck from both Flocks and as well as um our law enforcement customers and I'm not aware of the specific um customer that you're that you're referring to, that certainly um you know, we're happy to look into that further. Um if and if they want to reach out to us, they're more than welcome to do so and we can look into that further. But again, it's really flock monitoring proactively as well as taking the feedback from our customers.
Um and just a follow-up to that. So if a camera is down, will they be aware the camera is not working or would they only be aware of it if they tried to retrieve data from that camera after the fact? Like it could be down for weeks and nobody would know kind of thing.
Sure. Now, Tariq can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's something that we would be alerted to. And then our techs, it my understanding is that the vast majority of the issues can actually be um rectified remotely. And then, once we're able to diagnose what's going on with the camera, we will have a technician respond. And the S L A period on that, I think it's a couple days, Tariq, um or up to maybe seventy-two hours. But if it's something where a tech needs to respond, we will have someone come out and and physically inspect the camera and and conduct maintenance.
Yeah, just to kind of elaborate there. So uh and I've just had this actually occur a week ago with another agency. Um the agency was actually unaware that their camera had issues. Um it was flagged on our backend, so our support team actually reached out via emails and automated emails saying, hey, we're looking into the 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 downgrade of your uh camera quality or whatever the issue may be. Um the other route would be if, you know, the individual or agency noticed uh some sort of issue. They would contact us, lock the ticket, and then support would look into that further as well. But so it works both ways. If if we have a team that is monitoring and if we find something wrong, we notify you guys uh in advance.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, can I follow up on that? Yes, uh uh so so I assume we are getting data from all those cameras at at the headquarters saying this camera is working, but this is not working. Is so so there's there should be a monitoring report that you guys are getting to be able to know what is working or not. Can you send us a copy of that report every now and then? So we know that things are being monitored and that they are working.
So there we do have an insights dashboard that the administrators, so on the the police departments and the administrators of the system are able to see their um the functionality of the cameras, how the cameras help, how how those are operating. Um I can go back and see with our team if there's a a report that's available specifically related to the health of the cameras. But just know that the administrators on the on the department side, on your police department side, will be able to see the camera's functionality.
Well, the police isn't going to look at a camera unless there is a report that there's something happened at a particular camera. They're not monitoring each camera every minute. So if you do have a way of doing it, either you could provide an access to a website where you put the data for the city of Montesorino, say, here's your seventeen cameras. This is what's going on. They're all working or this one is not working. And anytime our city manager, whoever wants to deal with it, can go and find out, yeah, they're all working. It's it, you know, it's kind of tough to find out later on if this is working because some of these guys who go around stealing, maybe they have figured out how to block a camera. And you know, we may need to know that preemptively.
We do have Catherine on the line. She might be able to explain how frequently they monitor theirs or what what they currently are doing that might be helpful.
She will soon.
Hi, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Uh I was I was listening to see where this was going because actually we uh we were looking at our Las Gatos cameras actually late this morning. Um which is ironic, given this conversation. Um we monitor them all the time because we use them all the time. Uh and to the flock representatives' points, when we looked at the cameras, we saw that there was two particularly that um flock, I guess, was doing some type of service on um that were still working. Um and then there was one that we, I believe, contacted flock just to ask some questions about um to make sure that it was working properly. So um to the vice mayor's point, uh you know, I don't know what's possible in terms of the earlier ask uh in terms of platforms for you all to see. But it is something that we on the police end um do check on a daily basis. And certainly, if there were a problem, we would see that uh that there were a problem. Um and or flock would contact us to let us know if there were a problem. So uh you know, there may be I mean, I'm not sure if that's what the council is looking for, but if if there were an issue with a camera, um again, we we are checking cameras on a a daily basis, uh maybe not on the weekends, but during the week. Um and and we would certainly know if there were a problem.
Yeah, no, that's great. And you guys do a great job. I'm just concerned, I mean, right now, the number of cameras we're checking is probably not that high. But when once in the entire city of Saratoga and Las Gatos and Montesorino have a hundred cameras or whatever, it may be difficult for you to monitor. And I think it'd be an easy thing for flock to do is to set up a website. And it'd be a good selling point for you too. You can tell your customers that you guys can come to our website anytime and see that everything's working. So I I would appreciate if you guys could do something like that.
Okay, yes, councilmember Mecklenburg. Um I'm looking at the agreement and I think section two point five uh on page thirty-six of eighty-two in our uh packet talks to service interruption. And uh it's it's basically, it says that if there's interruptions, if you get a credit at the back end of the agreement. Um could you just uh could the representatives from flock just outline to us in this area what the what the service interruption pi- time period is if there's a minimum?
You mean a minimum in terms of how it's defined?
Yeah, so is it, is it have to be over a threshold, three days, four days, five days, or is it uh a portion of a day? Or, you know, what what it is? I think that's what we're getting at.
No, not at all, not at all. I mean, three days will give you three dollars, I guess, if you look at that entire year, you're missing on it. What I'm getting at is there are cameras that are not working and nobody knows about it. Because there are so many cameras out there. These guys monitor it. They can give us a website where we can go and say, okay, this has been, everything is working. But what happens is a robber comes in, he locks the camera, and you don't see it. Then the next day you find out there was somebody there, but the camera wasn't working. It's not good. There should be a way to for the customer to monitor to make sure this is what we're paying for and it is getting inside there. And the technology is already.
But I I would turn around and say if the teeth are there and they're not getting revenue for it, they being flock, then wouldn't it be in their best interest to make sure that?
But three days or one hour of downtime or one day of downtime doesn't mean anything. I mean, you're talking about fifty-five thousand dollars for seventeen cameras. So what's that? Fifty thousand dollars per camera and one day would be ten dollars a day or something, you know? But that doesn't really mean anything. And more important thing is we should know that everything is working all the time. And and we shouldn't be depending on the police department to go out there and do other things. And they may not get to a camera, especially if you have a hundred cameras out there. And I hope not does. You guys will be doing a good job. And I think this would add to your sales pitch to customers saying, hey, you guys can come to our website, see everything is working.
So um we're gonna open it up for public comment. I think we're done with questions. Uh I'm gonna have a question real fast and then we'll go to, and then I have another one. And then you have another one. So uh a question for the captain. Is there a proactive notification uh uh system that you're aware of in your current flock dashboard?
Um I personally am not aware of a proactive notification system, though I want to put an asterisk with that to say, while I know a lot about flock, I am certainly not a flock expert. Uh and I I'm sure that the flock representatives could answer that a hundred percent, but I don't believe that there's a notification per se, but um again, as I said before, you know, we do use it on a daily basis. Um and not that we have a hundred cameras, but to the example about a hundred cameras, um it is on our end very clear and very easy to see which cameras are working because it's literally just a like a list of all the cameras, uh line items. And you can see, you know, in green a hundred percent next to all of them. And if something's not working, it doesn't say a hundred percent or it's in red or it says zero. So even if we had a hundred cameras, which would be fantastic, but I don't think that's what we're discussing tonight. Um it would be no problem to be able to see which ones were working and which ones were not working. Additionally, as you know, we do have patrol uh that is driving around um, you know, twenty-four, seven. And if, for instance, a camera, you know, were were blocked or were vandalized or something like that, I feel very confident that one of the officers would. I feel very confident that one of the officers would likely see that on on routine patrol, so again, I'll defer to flock, but um there is definitely, you know, a mechanism uh while you are the customer, because you are purchasing the cameras, you know, we too, as the police department are the customer and we are monitoring it. Um, you know, on your behalf uh on a on a daily basis. Um, and if there were a longstanding problem, you know, I do feel confident that flock would contact us, but again, I I will defer to flock on that.
Okay, so then I will then move to flock and say, when you when 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 your network monitoring system detects a camera is is non-functional, do you notify the agency right away, or do you try to fix it for a while and and then to then notify the agency?
Yes, uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, so yes, our support team will receive that, kind of just like the scenario I painted earlier. Um, where they receive the notification that there was some sort of service degradation on that camera. We will try to work to resolve the issue and notify um the agency immediately of that. Uh, I think Captain Alvin kind of highlighted that with one of Hearst's cameras as well. Um, the other thing I wanted to highlight was the fact that uh we do have uh, you know, a service that gives you that dashboard, kind of that, you know, vice mayor was asking in regards to. It's just generally that's going to be for the end user. Um, for this scenario, since, you know, uh, Los Gatos patrols, Montesereno, it's a little different scenario. So what I can do is I can definitely go back to my team and see if there's a way we can develop a way for you guys to not have access to the cameras, kind of as you requested, but have access only to that dashboard. So let me dig a little deeper and see if that's something that we can provide, because generally, it's when you're getting the cameras, you get the dashboard and when you get the dashboard, you get the cameras, kind of, if you will. Um, lastly, I just wanted to highlight that uh just about every single agency in the Bay Area, um, let alone California as a whole, um is deployed with flock, so these are all things that these other agencies are dealing with on the daily. Um, and you know, as you know, the, you know, the the retention of our services has been very, very good. And I've not really heard of any issues in regards to downtime and not being uh made within that aspect, so um, I hope, if you will, you'd kind of take that with a with a grain of salt as to uh the service level that our support team has provided. Um, and provided to uh Los Gatos uh currently as well.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember McInchuck, or are you reversed?
Okay, member, hold on, thank you. Um, I understand we have a choice between either seventeen cameras or nineteen plus a mobile unit. Um, what extra coverage do cameras eighteen and nineteen give us, if you will?
So the the cameras um will be placed uh essentially in a perimeter around the city. Um, because there are so many entry points into the city, the um we felt that the two additional cameras would provide um the significant amount of increased coverage, particularly off of Winchester Boulevard, where there are so many streets that enter the city. So kind of the Winchester area is the one that would have the sort of fuller coverage.
Okay, so as a follow up, um, there's another option, of course, which is seventeen cameras plus one mobile camera, which is a, which is not one of the options you mentioned, but
Correct.
I'd like to make an argument in favor of mobile unit, because that seems to be something that's very useful. There's an area with suspicion activity, high activity. It can be moved, can be moved randomly around the city, uh that seems to be something very useful.
Okay, great, I I just did a, uh, just did a clarification on the mobile. Is this mobile that is just we started in Montesereno or will it also go down to Los Gatos or wherever else? The police department, I assume it's on the police department, yeah. It's a trailer, or it's in a trailer, it's on a trail, it can go anywhere outside the city of Montesereno also.
Uh, this one, this one that we're talking about actually can be deployed anywhere. Uh, we do have one that uh was on a trailer, I think we discussed it last time, the trailer got hit by a car, uh but the trailer is maybe fixed by now and the the camera is fine. Um, and so that particular one is made for a trailer. Um, this one, part of the reason I I really was drawn to it in the first place is it can essentially be deployed anywhere. Uh, you know, again, I don't want to speak out of turn, but looking at it, it seems like a pole, a tree. Um, i- it it really is unique in that respect and was not something that existed uh when I was dealing with this previously where I worked uh before, so it's a, it's quite an exciting um tool that would have definitely different applications, because again, interior of the of the um city as well as locations where maybe the traditional infrastructure that would be needed isn't there, we could still use it. And again, we could apply it as needed for, you know, particular issues as they arise. Um, in terms of, you know, if we were to use it solely in Montesereno or in Montesereno and Los Gatos, um, you know, if that was something that you wanted to put, uh, you know, a stipulation on, um, you know, that's something that I'm sure could be done. Um, otherwise, it it would be a tool that, you know, would be in our arsenal, just as the existing radar trailer with the camera could be used in Los Gatos or Montesereno.
Thank you, Captain, for the answer. No, I'm not suggesting we don't let uh Los Gatos uh use it. What I'm thinking is it may be a few of us, uh, when we negotiate the police contract, that we get the Los Gatos to pay its fair share for whatever the additional benefit it might get them. And uh generally speaking, all our seventeen cameras are giving them additional benefit, so we may want to consider that in our police negotiations that, you know, not just the initial sixty thousand, but the regular annual fee. Maybe some part should, they should they should pick up a little bit more of that.
That might be a tough issue, because if you look, for example, Poppy Lane, the houses alternate between Montesereno, Los Gatos, Montesereno, Los Gatos.
That's a good reason, isn't it? We're helping like that.
Yeah.
They need to pick up some tax.
Okay, um, did you want to ask something?
Yes, I've got a question, okay. Um, this is a question for Captain Alvin. Do you believe that this will help Los Gatos, Montesereno P D control their costs? Or do you think it will increase their effect, the the effectiveness of policing? And let me give you an example of that. Let's say that we're dealing with the issue where there was a vehicle that was identified committing a crime in Montesereno, and then uh it was found that that vehicle was heading down to Los Angeles. And then there were costs of policing in terms of of getting the person back from Los Angeles, so overall, the cost of policing went up because of the trip to Los Angeles where the travel involved whatever, but the effectiveness of the policing went up because the perpetrator was apprehended and prosecuted or whatever. So that's kind of an example, but what are your thoughts on the on flock cameras and us buying more flock cameras to manage the cost of policing and or reduce the cost of policing while increasing the effectiveness of it? I'm not sure if I communicated my question accurately or not, but do you understand where I'm where I'm coming from, uh, Captain?
I I mean, I think so. I think uh as I was listening to your story, I think you you kind of uh gave my answer to your question. I I do think um that the cameras, you know, do assist us in becoming more effective potentially as an added tool in our tool belt, which I know everybody loves that analogy so well, as as I used it many times last time, but um, yes, there could be, in theory, a a cost if we were to locate somebody in Los Angeles and we went to go extradite them, however, you know, we would only go there, obviously, if it were for a significant crime. Um, it would not be there to collect somebody, you know, for a a parking ticket. Um, and and that's something that we do already, um, is go, you know, to other uh jurisdictions to um, you know, bring people back into custody when we locate them uh for having victimized, you know, members of our community, so, you know, to your point, that that could happen with or without the flock cameras, but um, you know, I I guess there could be an argument made to say that there could be uh costs incurred by, you know, more travel to capture more suspects and more crimes, um, due to the fact that we could be more um prolific in capturing those people that victimized our community members. Um, but that seems, I'm not an accountant, but a good uh cost benefit analysis, given that analogy. Um, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I believe you asked the question and I, or sorry, you answered my question, and I have a follow on question. Um Yeah, uh no, I I I don't for for now, I'm sorry. Okay, so let me uh open it up for public comment. And Sarah, you had your hand up first from before, so come on up, you get to come to the microphone again.
So, um, follow question for the uh flock team regarding the status of the cameras, are they working, et cetera? Is your proactive monitoring in real time twenty four seven, or is it every thirty minutes, every one hour?
Thank you so much for that question. I actually don't have the specifics on that and really kind of the ins and outs on how our team manages those alerts, but that's certainly something I can take back to our team, get more information and share that uh with council.
Yeah, if that is something that's part of our contract, if we have like as part of the S L A agreement, if there like a real time monitoring, a minimum timeline, which we can know, if the cameras are down, to vice mayor's point, how will we know if it's down, if they can do the website monitoring? There could be something in that contract that either they're monitoring it in real time or in increments of thirty minutes, one hour, two hours, three hours. I think that specific is something important that we should know.
Okay, thank you very much. And Allison, mother?
Hi, I have a family member in Lincoln and I was talking to him about this, because I I kind of wondered how easy is it to defeat if you're like organized crime, uh it it seems like it would be too hard, but um, that aside, so I was talking to him about this topic and he said in Lincoln, my, and this is secondhand, but he said they thought it was too expensive, so they made an arrangement with the police departments in Sacramento and Folsom, and they have some reduced uh rate to have access to their cameras rather than installing their own or installing as many of their own, I'm not sure the details. But, I mean, to get to Montesereno, you have to go through Saratoga or Los Gatos, so I don't know if we really need seventeen of our own. Or if our police department could use the cameras in our surrounding communities to surveil.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hello, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Mike Wood, I've been a resident of Monteserio for twenty five years, homeowner. Uh, so just a couple of things before my prepared comments, to Vice Mayor's point, um where we have had a flock camera installed, a private one, for the last year. And the dashboard idea, the insights portion, you can see all the cameras, you know, to Captain's point, you just scroll down, we're all, most of us are tech oriented, you scroll down and you can see if it's all green, everything's good, if it's not, and it's super easy to use. I'd be a little, all the admins have access to that, we have an admin in our neighborhood. And the police department has access to our camera, and that's it, nobody else does. I don't know that I want any of you having access to that camera, honestly, even just see if they're up or down, whether they're green or red. That's actually a vulnerability to me, if somebody can see a whole segment of the neighborhood is down, and you're a bad actor, that potentially presents presents a target, so, but just uh talked about. The comment around using in other cities, using Saratoga's cameras, we have a camera, it supports about I don't know, thirty five homes, forty homes, we love it, and I'm not going to rely on the Montesereno cameras only because there are hundreds of people, we get it, we get thousands of cars coming in and out of just our little neighborhood. Can you imagine trying to mon- be relying on, you know, cameras coming in off Vinland and other areas, which have got thousands a day, you know, trying to sift through, figure out timestamp. Uh, it's it's impossible, so I just want to tell you uh two stories before and two stories after he installed the cameras. Story number one before flock. A neighbor had his new state of the art Audi sport S U V stolen in the middle of the night. The thieves were professionals from start to finish, they were gone in thirty seconds, I know, because my house camera watched the whole thing after the fact. The car alarm never activated, they were never um, they were never apprehended or caught. They did find the car in Oakland, uh a day or two later, it was completely demolished, they didn't catch the thieves. Story number two before flock. A homeowner in our neighborhood was burglarized while the owners were out to dinner, they were gone for less than two hours. Um, the thieves stole tens of thousands of dollars of all sorts of things, I won't go into the detail at all, but valuables, they avoided the video cameras around the house, they were in and out. Uh, the thieves were not caught, they were never caught, um, and that was quite frankly, the last straw for our neighborhood, our safe Montesereno neighborhood, which is a safe neighborhood. Story number one, after installing the cameras, um, a resident of in our neighborhood was scammed out of tens of thousands or to over ten thousand dollars. The thief showed up at the house, took a bag of money off the porch that the the person was told to leave there, the camera caught the car, Los Gatos P D uh got all the information. They're working on compiling a case with other cameras in other cities and all these other things, that's a positive story. Um, the other, uh, the second story is we had literally just recently, a car came into the neighborhood, a driver, two occupants. They got out and went down the ne- this is common in Montesereno, I'm finding, they got out, they went door to door along the cars and just wiped out anybody who had valuables in the car, took off. We had the camera tied to the police department and went straight to them. They filed the report, got information with the neighbors, and there's a good chance one that that person will end up getting caught. The camera catches the make, the model, the color, if there are bumper stickers on it, uh, all this information in the dead of night. It's, they're amazing to me, I tried to set my own camera, I'm a hardware engineer, um, uh, yeah, a a path hardware engineer. So I try to set it myself, it's it's almost impossible to do, these cameras are exceptional, I know I'm over my
Yeah, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, um, and it's only accessible to the police department, which is huge for us. We had the same concerns, ninety percent of the individuals who live in our neighborhood who are owners of their homes participated, they kicked in two hundred and fifty dollars each to have the system alive for up to three years uh now. Um, all the images are used if they're involved in a crime, um, we can't track the speed, it can't track the steep speed. I had a neighbor ask me that, I speed down the street, can I tell my speed? Nope, can't tell your speed, she said, that's great, thanks a lot. I think adding the these cameras to the interests of Montesereno is a game changer, it just dramatically increases our ability to, I think, work for crime, it builds confidence, you know, we sleep better at night, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
May I ask you a question? Councilmember like that quick. Do you believe we should get seventeen cameras or nineteen cameras plus the mobile?
I do, the, I think it's nineteen or twenty cameras, cover every entrance, I, we live on Vinland and via Palomino in the Loma Serena Improvement Association, whoever said it. The Winchester is a leaky bucket, there are so many entrances into Montesereno on both sides. Yeah, there's East Vinland, or no, there's uh El Rancho, I think is part of Montesereno, I would put them everywhere because when you don't have them somewhere, that's the area that you're going to be like, why didn't we just pay the extra, it's like three bucks a a home. For, you know, for the for the two years, about every three dollars a home, for us to have these things everywhere, like I'm I'm paying two hundred and fifty dollars just for, you know, our camera for in our neighborhood, I would absolutely do it everywhere and you don't regret anything, that's just my
Second question. As a neighborhood that went, that got together and contributed your own money, if the city of Montesereno gets another uh nineteen plus the mobile, will you be upset at us for doing that, or would that, would that make your camera more effective and therefore it would, it would be of value to you for us to do that?
Yeah, absolutely the latter, because it's, it just, it allows I I I mean, I'm not a detective, but it allows the detectives to go and just, you know, figure out, the car came into your neighborhood, Mike. At this time, it actually came down Vinland, it could have come down Palos Verdes, it could have come down Eaton, you know, all sorts of other ways, but it came down Vinland, and it came in off the freeway at Lark, you know, there's one on Lark between Los Gatos. And that, we've got one police department that covers the entire area, so they, they'll be able to root, figure it out, the route, everything, so I'm a huge fan of doing both, and we're not going to get rid of ours, because we've got, it gives us much more granular control over our own neighborhood, and which is our responsibility.
Thank you for answering my questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any, wait, I'm sorry, any other questions for Mike? No, okay, thank you, Mike, and now one other.
Well, I I just want to follow up on one other, I can say, uh, the uh uh Tom Conley and I are the self-appointed committee for uh Constitution, and we've already spoken to our neighbors and we're going to put one on the corner of Constitution and Dave's Avenue. And we won't be upset that the city is paying for other things, we're going to pay for this just for additional protection. And I think then here, when we look at what you know, when we look at what we pay things over the summer, you know, my water bill is two thousand bucks a month, spending a couple of dollars for this. And I think that, I think the city should do the nineteen plus the mobile, and I think anybody who's on a street who doesn't have it, I say, you know, we're going to do it, and people do it too, because I, I think there's, you know, critical mass there.
Yeah. So, so Juan?
Yes.
So, you also agree with Mike that the granularity is, is an important factor?
Absolutely, I think the more the police department can see it, and I think in terms of the April will be forty-six years of Mary and I lived in Montessorino, I think that this will be money well spent by the city, and also for those of us who, you know, like our little alveosack on Constitution and Sebree, to pay for our own thing in addition, to make it part of the system.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the chambers that would like to speak regarding this item? Do we have anybody online?
Your hands raised.
Okay, so at this point, I'm closing the public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to staff for discussion, possibly a motion. So, who would like to speak first? Councilmember Beck.
So, I'll be supporting nineteen cameras plus the mobile. I'm pleased that, that people aren't going to be upset at what we're doing that already have the cameras. And then, the issue that I, I didn't see or I don't understand is the payment and when it's going to be effective. And is it going to be prior to July, June thirtieth, or after July first, or like a day or two after? That's what I, what I don't understand, and perhaps the city manager could explain that.
Yes, thank you, so the two options for the installation would be immediately, so as, we work on the agreement with block as soon as possible, and, and they would get their installations, because completed as quickly as possible. They've told us it generally takes about two months to install the cameras. The second option would be waiting until July first, and the agreement could be signed before July first, with an effective date of July first or after, and the installation would start as soon in July as possible.
In, in terms of the payment, though, so we could pay now, or we could pay on July the first, when our new fiscal year starts, and the ability to use some of the supplemental law enforcement funds?
In order to use the supplemental law enforcement service funds for next fiscal year, the installation would not begin until July first.
Okay.
And then the payment would be made at, generally at the last camera.
Now, would, would block be amenable to starting the project now and being paid, or on, on July first, or can we actually not do any work until July first?
Um, we, we did try to, to get that information about how the supplemental law enforcement service funds are allowed to be spent, and the best information we've received is to be on the safe side, and delay the installation until July first, in order to ensure next fiscal year's funds can be used for that purpose.
Thank you. But, did, did we have a date as to when the cameras would be going live, so that we would start to get the benefit? That's what we discussed at the last meeting in, in my notes.
So, we can
And does someone, perhaps someone from block could comment on that, I don't know, or?
Yes, I was going to actually ask Truik if he may be able to comment on that, they have told us in the past that as each camera is installed, it will be online. But Truik, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, correct, so I mean, it really just depends on, you know, when the contract is signed, and then going through the permitting process. I can say that right now, generally, installations are taking anywhere from, you know, six to eight weeks on average, sometimes more, it just really depends on the permitting process with each independent city. Since we've been very transparent with both permitting within Montessorino, as well as Los Gatos, I anticipate that, you know, there should be no hangups there, so we should be able to move through pretty swiftly. But to lean on the safe side, I would say at least a minimal of eight weeks for that first camera to be installed, and then generally, we can knock out a few of those within that same day, within like a two-week period. That would be for majority of your cameras, there are a couple cameras that are on Caltrans right away. Those cameras will take a little bit longer, could be anywhere from six months, since there is a separate permitting process where we have to go through Caltrans for that. I believe there's only two cameras that are on Caltrans right away, so everything else outside of that would be installed pretty, pretty swiftly.
And then, to our city manager, we would ensure that this would be at the top of the permitting process priority.
Yes, definitely, either way.
I have a follow-up, follow-up question to the financial questions. Sixty thousand dollars won't be available effectively until July first. City will have to pay the rest of it anyway, so why don't we pay the rest of it now, install whatever, eight cameras, and then the remaining twelve cameras after July first? Is that possible?
So, the, the supplemental law enforcement service fund that we receive every year are one hundred thousand dollars. And they, in this instance, they can be used only for the initial installation of the cameras. So whether there's seventeen or twenty cameras, the the funding would cover the entire in, initial installation of, of either amount. But we can't use it for the ongoing.
Right, can I read that? So, that, the answer is no, it doesn't work, or it's not?
I don't believe so.
But, but I thought I was under the understanding we weren't using the entire amount of the Ops grant, we were really using a portion of it, and then we were paying for the rest of it.
So, we would be using the the COPs funding for the installation, so the COPs funding is one hundred thousand a year.
So, we would use the full amount?
There would still be additional.
Correct, but I'm just saying, we're, we're allowed to use, I thought in the beginning, there was discussion of only using about sixty thousand of the hundred thousand, but you're saying we're using the full hundred?
Correct, the sixty thousand would be for seventeen cameras. So I do that for that number that was voted.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clear that one.
So, councilmember LaHai?
Thank you, yeah, thank you for the discussion, I think it's very helpful. I, I, I agree along with putting nineteen cameras plus one on it. I, I really am concerned about the monitoring part, though, and we probably need to set up a procedure where we have an administrator or somebody who's the only one who's looking at those cameras, I think you're at the good point, you're concerned about other people, but so, but we should have a way that the city managers, staff, or somebody can monitor, make sure they're working it all the time. Or at least have access to it, so I, I would move to approve it, subject to them providing us with a dashboard, that the other city can monitor whether they're working all the time or not, and not depend on them or depend on the police, because I'm, I'm sure that is, but that's still secondhand. So, we should have a real monitoring. That was your man here, councilmember Shannon?
Um, thank you for all the additional information that we heard here tonight, and thank you to residents who spoke about the block cameras. I was leaning towards seventeen cameras initially. I think absolutely we should wait until July first for the installation, but we can use the SLEFS funds. I am in favor now of doing the full nineteen and the mobile camera, because we can use those funds towards the entire package, and the difference is going to be the additional nine thousand dollars a year that we have to pay to monitor those three additional cameras. Given that the citizens are in favor of this, we haven't heard anything negative about it, I think we should go ahead and move on this, and I, and I am very comfortable with the explanation that Captain Albin gave us, that they are checking to see that the cameras are all working. I don't think it's necessary to give an additional, you know, task to staff to be checking those cameras at all times, now, if we get to a point where we feel like it's not working, and cameras are going offline, and that the police department's not catching this, we might have to readdress it. But for now, I, because of privacy issues, and even though it sounds like this would just be seen if the cameras are operational, not looking at any data, I feel the privacy issue is enough that let's just keep it in the hands of the professional, which is the police department.
Okay, so councilmember LaHai, I think you said motion, yeah, I said motion, and it would be effective July first. Okay, so your motion is to approve the contract for nineteen cameras plus one mobile, and the construction of the cameras would start on July first.
July first.
And, and the light of the rear of monitoring, yes. Now, if they can't provide it for us, I mean, they can't promise that right now.
Well, they're, they're providing it, but they don't have a way to, well, because
So they provide it to one user, we're an unusual circumstance, because it's we, we have a contract police firm, that's going to be our authorized users, that's where, where typically you get one authorized user.
Yeah, but police department isn't, they don't have a dashboard either.
No, they will, they will.
No, they actually have to go look at a camera, see if it's working or not, they don't have a dashboard.
No, they have a dashboard that shows all the cameras.
Yeah, we, we do have a dashboard. We can physically go look, and we, we do have a dashboard, and that was what I was saying, that we check on a daily basis, it's the same one that was mentioned earlier by the resident, that it shows the percentages and which cameras are working and so forth. And that's the one that we check every day, the physical check would just be an additional layer.
Well, well, I just want to touch up, so is this a motion you're making?
Yeah.
Okay, with, with, with the, with the monitoring, councilmember Beck.
I was I was going to make a motion that, as councilmember Shannon said, we don't include the dashboard requirement, we stay with the way it is today operating with the police department, and if in the future we find there's an issue, then we can readdress it, but, yeah.
Well, he made the motion first, so let me ask if there's a second, and if we don't get a second, then the motion will fail and we'll lose yours. Okay, so do we have a second? Okay, seeing no second, I will then allow councilmember Meckinship to make his motion.
If that is, or either way. Uh, councilmember Shannon would like to make motion.
Uh, I'd like to move that we ask the staff to secure a contract for nineteen cameras plus one mobile camera, and that we will start this work after July first, so that we can use the SLBSF funds towards the new cameras.
I will second that motion.
And we have a second. So for this, we will need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Walshhammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shannon?
Yes.
Councilmember Meckinship?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaHai?
Aye.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Question carries.
Congratulations, we now have block cameras coming to our city, and thank you very much for everybody who came to speak about them today and their experiences with them, Mike, that was very helpful, so that we get a good feeling for how, how you're using them every day, and how you feel that they've really added to your comfort and safety in the city. Yes.
And I'd like to thank Captain Albin for her insight on this, and for answering our questions, thank you.
And thanks for the folks for block again, and I look forward to a long and prosperous partnership. At this point, we're going to take a, a five-minute reset. And let folks who would like to file out, file out. I just want to surround, so, surround pass, we'll break. Grab a bathroom break. And we are back. Thank you, listeners. We are on item number six and we are going to discuss options for uses for the auxiliary building. As well as potential operations to City Hall. And one of our council members lives within three hundred feet of this building. She is going to recuse herself. So Lisa, we have a soundproof booth with with cookies and coffee and. You know, my daughter makes some really good cookies tonight. I had some, but I ate them all so I could bring it home. And I'm eating more cookies now. I eat all those too.
Go back there somewhere.
We'll we'll. There is a bowl of candy in there. If if you don't have any candy tomorrow morning, you know where it all went. Okay, so can we start off with a staff report on this item, please?
Yes, thank you. Um at the November nineteenth city council meeting, the council directed staff to provide information about alternative uses of the auxiliary building. And site um as well as potential alterations to the hall to provide a better meeting space for community groups. Um the previously considered remodeling of the auxiliary building. Um had been wired three different grants which totaled approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. Um those grants were awarded based on the building being used as a community building that would also be open to the public. So these grants could not be used for any remodeling remodeling that does not result in a community space that is open to the public. Um at the November nineteenth council meeting, several public comments were made about the ability to lease the building to a private user. A staff contacted a local real estate agent to determine the feasibility of such abuse. And the feedback was that the building could be used for a professional office. With an expected monthly rent in the range of thirty five hundred to five thousand dollars. However, commercial leases typically typically require a landlord to provide what is referred to as a worn shell building. Which means that the interior floor levels of the existing building would need to be altered so that they were at the same level so that the building is usable. The whole area is usable. On the interior sheet rock of plates and disabled accessible bathroom be provided. As well as the installation of a heating and cooling system and the city would need to improve these costs. Um additionally, such a use would require an amendment to the zoning code to allow professional office uses of the city. And the site would need to be rezoned. Um another public comment that was made at the November nineteenth meeting was whether the post office. Um would be interested in opening up a branch at this location. We did talk to the postmaster at the Los Gatos Post Office. And she indicated that this would likely not be an option for the post office. Um the building is not big enough for them to move their facilities from Los Gatos into this building and on the post office is. Trending to downsize their locations rather than expand locations. Um the building is currently being used as storage for staff on the lower level. Um this could continue at essentially no cost to the city. However, over the long term, there will be additional maintenance costs such as exterior paint and potentially a new roof on the building. The city council also asked staff to look into the possible alterations to the city hall building. Which could create a community meeting space that would be useful for different um community and neighborhood groups. Staff met with local architect. And they provided an estimate of fifteen thousand dollars to complete a feasibility study. That would provide conceptual layouts for such alterations to this building. Staff recommends that the city council consider these options and provide any direction to staff on the issue. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you very much. And so we are only giving directions. There is no vote that we need to take on anything tonight, correct? Okay, so. Any questions for staff? And after the questions, we'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no questions, I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody online who would like to speak?
No hands are raised.
Okay.
I believe council member Shannon would like to.
Okay, great. I will go get her.
Now, I've been in meetings where you could unmake comment.
She she is allowed to make comment as a public member. And that um she retained her right first mention to speak as a as a member of the community.
Here I am as a member of the community, as Kirsten just said. Um I I read the staff report. Thank you, Diana, for that information regarding the accessory building. Um I am still in favor of using that building as rental income for the city. Um doing some simple uh finishing and modifications to get it ready for rent. I know the staff report mentioned that we'd have to do some rezoning uh or possibly have to do some rezoning in that instance. Um but I didn't totally understand because that building has been rented before to the post office and the Red Cross and. Um stormwater. Um so I'm not sure why wouldn't you would need rezoning. For that, but I am in favor of us utilizing that building to actually generate income for the city. Um or in the alternative, and this has come up more than once. Tearing the building down and creating an open space, a green space, a small park for the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing nobody online, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council. And who would like to open the discussion?
I. Don't think that right now we need to do anything. It's been sitting there for a while. I would say another. Three, four months is no big deal. Um and I think there's some other issues that are a very high priority for the city to deal with right now. And I don't think that we've got the bandwidth to try to do all kinds of things and. Tear it down or do whatever. I I think we just kind of table this for now and let it be used as it is for storage. You know, that's. You know, one's got the energy right now to to deal with this. And I don't know if making a decision tonight is gonna give direction to to put another item on the plate. So.
Yes, council member.
I agree with some of the council member. I literally wrote down for now do nothing. Partial score is just like.
Okay.
Councilmember Lahey. I I guess you've just given these parts so many times. I couldn't think of it exactly. I mean, we approved doing something, we approved a budget on it. I said, no, you don't want to do it. It's too expensive. And then the question is whether we're going to use a grant or not. I guess we have, life is too June on that grant. So either we do something that allows us to use the grant or we just go in a different direction.
So.
I guess I don't know if you do a rental thing, but you can still make it. Solar energy friendly, but they want to show off their. Solar stuff, so it may not work.
The, just to to make it patently clear. I dealt with this at SBCE and I was told in no uncertain terms that. Nothing has to be done by the end of May, but if. You want to preserve the grant, you have to issue a contract to do something by. So that's still a little ways out and. I think the only way to to do something quickly would be to do a design build contract. Um and say, we want to spend X amount of dollars, what can you do? You know, that may be the last sort of kick at this because we know what the budget is. And we say, here it is, what can you build for this much? And we see what can be built, you know, get that light fixed. Get. Energy saving LED lights in there. But I also don't think we should spend money and try to figure out what to do with this this room right now. You know, the the fifteen thousand or whatever it is, I'm not sure. I think that um dealing with the wildfires and and more resilience is probably. Better off or better use of of our limited time and energy. My thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask our city attorney just to clarify what. Uh Lisa Shannon had mentioned, we were actually receiving revenue on that building from the stormwater. Whatever it used to be called way back when. And why would we have to redone it now if we were trying to?
The the prior users were all governmental entities, so I believe it's zoned public.
This property is owned R one eight.
Okay.
So it may have been considered a continuation of the post office use. Generally, and I think our municipal code says that if a use on. Continues on, you know, that the building isn't vacant for a period of more than one year, then the previous use can continue.
So was the legal nonconforming.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was in record that we do need to actually rezonate if we were to try to. And create something where we generate a revenue from it. Even if it's a public agency.
The other um question or issue with that too is we don't have a commercial zoning district, so we would actually be creating a new zoning district. Um that could then potentially be used elsewhere in the city.
Okay.
Make a comment on what the council member Shannon said, that we um rented the building out to the post office. That's not exactly true. We paid the post office fifty thousand dollars a year. To have a post office here, so we didn't get revenue. We paid them fifty thousand dollars.
And the other thing is, the Red Cross never rented them. This was the Red Cross building and we bought this building from the Red Cross, but. Things get lost with this mid miss of time, yes.
One one question I had, we have to do it for the holiday element. We have to do some rezoning anyway, right?
Correct.
Were approved, so would that help us to redo this thing as part of that whole process and say, yeah, we rezoned this uh block type right here?
So the rezonings that are envisioned um on Winchester are. Rezomings under a state law referred to as SB ten, which allows only residential uses. So uh we wouldn't be. Venturing out into any non-residential uses with those um reasons.
But this this could be a.
Yes.
Doesn't have to be a question. It could be a. One small ADU type in there, I guess. Would we have to rezonate? So we don't have to rezonate if you were constructing it like a rental unit, basically.
Okay. Well, I like everybody's idea that we have some very pressing matters in our near future and we should revisit this. At another meeting. In fact, we may have some open time and a meeting coming up in about a month and a half or so. So. We'll close this item now or finish this item and move on. Let you go invite council member Shannon back in.
I agree. I would just forget if you also look at it as special optimism. It's a million dollar problem. You need to do something at some point. In block discussion order, that.
Okay, well then we're gonna throw an easy one. Our way. Item number seven, consider and appoint one additional member to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Monty Sereno Youth Commission and we have a staff report on that one?
So the youth commission ordinance calls for appointments of the youth commissioner annually and allows up to fifteen youth commissioners. Currently, the youth commission has a total of eight members. Uh recently, the city received an additional applicant from the following Montessorino Youth Glory back in. And um we reached out. I confirmed with mayor and. Craig, if it'd be okay for us to, you know, bring in bring his application to you tonight. Um unfortunately, he's not, he's not able to attend. Uh he is um on a basketball team and. But did email send an email uh for everybody to look at, so.
Yes. Yes, well, we'll have him come in and introduce himself sometime soon. But um. Any questions for staff? Yes.
There, I read the application. There is a very error in the application. Somebody should inform the potential youth commission member that Montessorino is not a town. Well, you're a city, aren't you?
I I was looking to go to Westmont High School.
So they just recently, oh, go ahead.
Yes, so they just moved here, but Big Mel Rowland is part of the Westmont High School District.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah.
You could live in Montreal and go to Westmont.
Yes, if you live on, if you live on Big Mel, there's sixty six homes over there. You go to Marshall Lane, Rolling Hills and Westmont.
That's why you're the mayor.
And I hear it takes nothing short of an act of God to make that. And I hear it takes nothing short of an act of God to make that, to make that any, any different. But you know what? I would have thought that other things would have happened, but they have. So I am going to.
Thank you. I have a question about when is the next youth commission meeting? And I'm wondering if we can wait on this and ask him to join to the next council meeting? If there's not going to be a youth commission meeting in between.
There will be.
There will be then.
He actually attended as just as a public member. With my with his mom, they wanted to see, you know, and had an opportunity after the meeting to just ask questions to the youth commissioners.
Well, technically, we have our February fourth meeting. And then the actual youth commission meeting is on the eleventh, correct? So we could postpone this, have them come in. I would, I would like to just get them on board, I want, I want to get them locked in. I want to give them any chances to squirm out of this.
Okay, so, yeah, my thought was just more along the lines of. It's sort of a process that he, you know, comes and introduces himself and then we approve him perhaps at that moment while he's here, but. I understand and I know you're in charge of the youth commission, so you know better how it works.
Yeah. Well. I'd like. Okay, yes, that's remembering if you, if you take public comment, then I'll make a motion. All right, I'm gonna open it for public comments. Do we have anybody online that would like to vouch for? I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to council.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rory Mackin to the City of Monte Sereno's Youth Commission.
We have a motion and a second, call in favor.
Yeah.
All right. And motion is approved, and that will take us to item number eight. Which is to accept the mid-year budget report for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And. Make a determination of necessary staff reductions due to operation issues. Sure, there's a staff report, but you're going to enjoy the event.
Very much so, thank you. This year, mid-year budget status report is to provide the council with the status of the revenues and expenditures through December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Which is fifty percent of the fiscal year. Attachment one to the report includes people showing the adopted budget. Actual revenues and actual expenditures through the end of December. As well as revised projections for the year fiscal year end. Total revenue received through fifty percent of of the fiscal year were approximately forty three percent of the budgeted amount. The main source of revenue for the city is property taxes, which totals sixty three percent of the budgeted revenue. Because the property tax revenue is received in December, January, and then April, May. The mid-year revenue is a bit short of the fifty percent of the year that has passed. However, staff does project that year-end revenue will be in line with the budgeted amounts. Through the first half of the fiscal year, the total expenditures were about forty six percent of the total budget. And the main deviations in budgeted expenses. Is in the personnel expenses for city employees, which will be lower than planned due to staff vacancies. However, the general government and administration categories. Will be higher than planned due to increased use of consultants to backfill for the staff vacancies. However, overall staffing costs of combined personnel and consultants will be lower than the budgeted amount. Staff projects that at the end of the fiscal year, there will be a surplus of approximately approximately one hundred twenty three thousand dollars. As compared with the budgeted surplus of twenty five thousand. Also, as part of this budget review, staff is recommending that the council consider a reduction in staffing due to operational reasons. The reduction in personnel includes one part-time finance officer slash facility manager position. As well as changing the full-time maintenance worker position to part-time. The part-time finance officer slash facility manager position was filled in June of twenty three. With the intent that this position would manage the community center construction. As that project is no longer moving forward, this position is no longer needed. The maintenance worker was originally filled as a part-time position in May of twenty twenty three. And in October twenty twenty three, the position was moved to full-time. The maintenance staff worked to address issues of debris on roads, on illegal dumping on the side of roads. And clearing debris from storm drains. Due to the relatively small area of the city and the limited number of city facilities and buildings. This workload warrants a part-time position rather than a full-time. Staff recommends second council accept the media budget report for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. And make a determination of. Necessary staffing reductions due to operational reasons. So that completes the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also have Ron Vincent, who is our financial consultant here tonight, who can answer any more detailed questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Question for staff? Anybody? Want to start us off? Yes, council member Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Diana and I had the opportunity to meet earlier in the week to go over the budget, to talk about it. So I could ask all my questions about, you know, what's in these accounts and how does this work and. I had a lot of satisfaction that they spent a lot of time on putting this report together. And that it's accurate to the best, you know, best to the inference that's available to them. But I'm wondering what part of all of this, Ron, what part did you have in preparing this budget report for council today?
I had very little input on the thing, but I did meet with Diana specifically on the, on the review. And.
Ron, have you come up?
Of course, sorry.
I don't know if we're gonna be talking with you for a while, would you like to take the seat next to council member Shannon? Is it open over there, Diana? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the microphone works, but.
I'll speak loudly. People are appearing remotely. But so I I I did meet with Diana specifically to review the summary of budget actual. Initially prepared. And I encouraged her to keep it as simple as possible. Because I think that the council's main interest is knowing that. You know, where they stand with relationship with the budget at the mid-year, right? You have to make decisions relative to. Do you need to spend more in a certain area? Do we need to look at revenue? That is either increased or decreased from what was being budgeted, and I believe that what she prepared. They address those questions. In addition to that, I have been working with the. The in-house financial person pre. And. In reviewing her work. My opinion at this stage of the game is that she's doing a really good job. And that the information that's being input, which is essentially what Diana has used to prepare this document. Is accurate. And she has a handle on both the revenue side and the expense side as to what's going into the general ledger. So I I think you have good numbers to work with from that. So. Specifically relative to this report. You know, I I believe that Diana's done a really credible job in terms of preparing for the council. What they need to know in terms of the overall budget and that was that was passed. And what the year-to-date actuals are through December thirtieth.
Okay. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, council member.
I asked. Our city manager a question all through email. About a week ago or so, when I saw the first version of this report, and I'd like everybody to be aware that I did ask the question. I'd like to, at some point, about tonight maybe, but at some point, know the exact status of our reserves. Not just about it, but how much money do we have in the bank? And that's not included in this report, that was not the intent of this report, but I think. Probably one of the next meetings, I'd like to hear status of our reserves also.
Okay, and I will also mention at an upcoming meeting, we're going to be reviewing our FER's situation, correct?
Correct, at the February eighteenth city council meeting, we will have a presentation from. Our other finance consultant on FER's unfunded pension liabilities. What they mean, how they're calculated. What we should do or what our options are to do about.
Okay. Yes, couple number a lot.
Yeah, so. I guess FER is, I was trying to see if you had put the FER's expenses in here also or not. But I didn't see a specific point heading, but I assume they're part of the expenditures or?
On the. Part of the expenditures includes the fifty eight thousand dollars that was budgeted. To pay towards the liability this year.
Which line item is that in?
It is not a specific line item, I believe. College, I don't remember off the top of my head, I believe it falls under the administration category of the expenditures.
The six hundred and two thousand were that staffing expense basically, administration?
So there's several different categories in there. There are some consulting costs under the administration and. Like I said, if I'm recalling correctly, that's also where the FER's pension liability.
Is that the ongoing fifty eight thousand we're paying here, just that? But not the anticipated to catch up with all the four hundred and fifty thousand or some other number that we have?
That is correct, so with this current budget, on what was approved was to pay the fifty eight thousand dollars a year. Over what I believe was a fifteen-year period. And. As we mentioned at the February eighteenth meeting, we'll have a presentation on. Sort of what are, what are the pros and cons of paying different amounts? And then as part of next year's budget, we'll present other alternatives. And for council to to discuss and decide upon about how to pay pay off the liability.
Yeah, I love probably this February eighteenth meeting, but. I might ask you some preemptive questions again, apologies. So so basically. We we need to figure out the budget as to how we can take care of paying off the FERs, and the question that I would have is. You know, Mayor Allen says he paid it off completely and now you're back to the same amount that he paid off. It sounds like we're not paying enough or FERs not making enough money to be able to pay future liabilities. I mean, we we pay the FERs for existing employees, but the employees who have already retired. That seems to keep going on, so hopefully they'll answer that question to, what do we need to do to either completely pay it off or catch up or not? We'll go further in the whole of that. The other thing I wanted to ask is that, it doesn't go with the media safety, but the fire has been a big issue. So do we need to think about what are the expenses might? The city may need to incur to be able to. Yeah. Deal with that issue.
Yes. There could be additional.
Expenses and. I don't know if you, if it's expensive the next six months, but things would make plenty. That's a lot, thank you. And I also, Dan, thank you for.
Any other questions? Hey, I had one, one question. So there has been some changes in staffing. Is that reflected in the mid-year review? So.
Yes, so on the very last page of the report is the expenditures table. And the personnel expenses. Are lower than. You know, fifty percent of the year. Because of the additional staff, staff vacancies that have occurred recently. We do expect at the end of the fiscal year, it will be even less than that. But then in the general government category and the administration category are consulting costs. And so we do anticipate those to increase. But to increase less than the savings on personnel costs. So the overall. Staffing costs together will be less than budgeted.
Okay, great. Oh, I I'd also refer that. I'm on this consultancy to basically give us. What consultants have been paid over the last three to five years? I mean, that information can be taken out of ten ninety-nine, so it shouldn't be too much work to try to figure that out. We have some idea who's been paid how much over the next last few years.
Okay, so at this point, I will. Close the questioning and open this item up for public comment. Is there anybody online who wishes to speak? See, there's no one in chamber.
No hands raised.
No hand raised, I'm closing the public comment, I mean, comments. And bringing it back to council for discussion or a motion.
Just just to be clear, you've already made those changes on the official site for staff production, or do you need anything from us to approve that?
So the. The estimated year-end expenditures does include the. Recommendation of the staffing reductions, although the cost savings for the end of this year are pretty minimal for those. Two proposals. But at tonight's meeting, part of the motion, if council. Would like to reduce those staffing positions, would need to. Be, would need to include making that determination that staff reductions are necessary due to operational issues.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, council member McCann check.
I will make the motion to accept the proposed budget as set forth. In the staff report.
And thank you, do we have to include the staff reductions, including the staff reduction?
So just to clarify, the council would be making a determination that a reduction in personnel is necessary for operational reasons. As outlined in the staff report.
So.
You have a second, second, we have a second, and I have a roll call vote, please.
Council member Shannon?
Yes.
Council member McCann?
Bye.
Vice Mayor Locky?
Hi.
And Mayor Craig.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. And that takes us back to Diana for the city manager's quarterly report covering October. Through the end of twenty twenty four.
Thank you. This quarterly report is an opportunity for staff to provide counsel. With an update on administrative items that have been completed in the past three months. And I will highlight just a couple that are included in the staff report. During the last quarter, the city's general plan updating project has begun. Our consultant has developed or published a website which provides information about the process. Allows users to sign up for an electronic newsletter and other notifications of the project. And will also include surveys where residents can provide input into the process as the update moves along. This project will span almost two years and is expected to be completed in summer of twenty twenty six. The next item is an update on the engineering department. A consulting engineer has been hired to fill the vacancy engineer position. And she is working on several outstanding projects and one of. Her main priorities is the preparation of plans and documents for the annual payment management project. To be completed hopefully this fiscal year. And lastly, staff has begun working on the development of online tracking, permit tracking systems for engineering department permits. Which would include allowing customers to submit the permits online, pay their fees online and issue the encroachment permit online. Similar to what currently happens with building permits. Because we will be modeling the system after our current building permit program. That'll allow us a lot of efficiencies in in the developing this ring encroachment permits. And we are also working on a tracking system for code enforcement cases. Which will allow staff to better track the cases electronically rather than paper files, which we do now. And will also allow residents to submit any code enforcement complaints or concerns online. And that concludes the update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions for staff? Yes.
Yeah, it's great you guys are doing this. Raising all this process. There are residents in life, you know, without a computer today. So what? I'll smoke in the exit, there's somebody that's a very.
Yes, so similar to our building and planning processes now, we still will accept applications at the counter. And we have had a few who have requested that, so we then will scan the file, you know, their their plans ourselves and. Help them through the process.
Any other questions? Yes, council. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Shannon.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the general plan and and really getting started with. I know there's the website. But there's not much there yet. It's not much that's happened. And it's my understanding that this part of that, they're going to be issuing surveys out to the residents. Will council have a chance to see those surveys before they are sent out?
Yes, we can share them with you before for for any feedback and comments.
Okay, thank you. I don't know how soon that's gonna start happening. I'm presuming fairly soon.
I believe so. Um, I believe in the next month or so. So yes, we will share that with council.
Thank you, Dan.
So I had one quick question regarding the the permitting module also. Is this a a system that we're developing? Or is it something that is commercially available?
So it is um a program that um we have had, we've developed for building and planning. Um, I believe the the building system went into effect in twenty twenty. And the planning in, I believe, twenty twenty three.
Okay. So was there a reason that we built it instead of purchasing one? I just. I'm very leery of small organizations building complex systems and having to maintain them throughout the years.
So my understanding is the decision um was made to build the system. Many of the off-the-shelf programs are very expensive. Um, and much more complicated. And sort of tedious to work through for staff as well as for the online services. And so the the more efficient and less costly option was to um develop it ourselves.
Okay, great. Um, maybe at some point, I would just be personally interested. Maybe we can do it as part of our IT committee. To just talk to the developer. I would just like to get an idea of how it's being built and what would be the plans for long-term maintenance of this. Make sure that it's being done with. I'll say standard library programming tools. Uh, I know it's web-based, so I don't know what kind of uh foundations that they're using for, what kind of databases on the back end. But is this going to be something that will serve us for the next twenty years? And is this something that if this developer is no longer able to service, are we going to be able to find somebody to take his place? And keep it going? So those are just just things that we should think about there.
Definitely.
Okay, Councilmember Beckinjohn, if you, I was just gonna make a comment that the needs of the city of Monte Sereno. Are, let me say it differently. I was wondering the same thing, asking the same questions you're asking. And when I looked into it, our requirements are so small and unsophisticated. It's like to take a system that is commercially available. They have to be more scalable and and broader. And when you try to. Simplify it and not use so many modules, it becomes horrendous to configure. But but my my initial reaction was, why aren't we building this ourselves? That's crazy. No one does that. But. We're a little different and. I actually have used the system a couple of times for permitting, and I just used it uh recently. For uh a car charging application. And it worked out really well. Great, so.
It's good to get firsthand experience or or reviews on it. I'm gonna have to to love the project so I can use it.
Um, I just want to say, I think my permit for um some work I did on my house, I think I was like one of the first people or first handful of people that got a permit using the new system. So it's probably helped me navigate it. I think we learned together a little bit.
Great. Okay, so at this point, if there are no more questions, I'm going to. Open it up for public comments. See, nobody in chamber. Do we have anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised online, so I will close public comment, bring it back to council. At this point, we are able to discuss or I can entertain a motion at this time to accept the report. I'll make a motion to accept a uh city manager's report. Excellent.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Do we need a roll call vote on this? All in favor?
All right.
All against? If we have a unanimous decision? I know you were looking at me like I forgot.
My eyes.
Uh, okay. So that now takes us to our committee and commission reports, and behind your names on top, so I'll start with you.
All right, um. I will say that uh just bear with me for a moment so I can go through in the order. Uh, BTA Policy Advisory Committee, we met this week. And. I think there's some opportunities there for. The city of Monte Sereno to get some funding. I've always said that, but not having. Um, a city engineer is hard to to look at. Um, the grants that are available and how we've been into that. Um, so I did attend that uh. The Stormwater Authority, uh it's nice to see the name change on here now. And Solid Waste, we're not meeting this. Uh, we won't meet until after the next meeting. Uh, SBC, I did not attend the meeting last week. Um, and it was a weird kind of meeting because of the timing with the. Third, second Wednesday or whatever it was. Um. But I'll have some council member comments uh and future agenda items, so. That's the summary of my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Shannon.
Uh, I had the opportunity to go to the West Valley Sanitation District uh board meeting and. Meet the other members from West Valley, so that was nice to meet some other council people. Um, they uh we elected a new chairperson, and that chairperson is Rob Moore of Los Gatos. Um, and then as part of San- the sanitation district, there's a sub. Group that meets with San Jose called T-PAC, because I'm probably all aware of this. Rowena was involved in T-PAC, and apparently she would attend all of these meetings in San Jose um as a representative for West Valley. So um they were looking for someone to be on this T-PAC committee and um. I offered to be an alternate for that, just because I'm so new to everything, but I but I am interested in attending those T-PAC meetings. Um, and learning more about that.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Wolseley?
There were no meetings, um any of my committees or commissions, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, great. Councilmember Alain?
Uh, no meetings, but uh. The city association is gonna get started this Thursday, so that's something to report to you next time.
Okay, great. And I. Attended our Monte Sereno Youth Commission. And we, again, as we voted on earlier, we're happy to have a new member. We talked about our work plan for the spring, and we talked about the success of our. Our cans and coats program. Uh, boy, did you have any? Numbers or kind of? I mean, what 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 our overall percentage was, probably in decimals or?
Uh, I don't remember. I think we shared that in our la- in our last meeting.
I think you did.
Yeah, but there was definitely over a hundred um. These uh toiletry kits donated donated by actually uh Donna Tam. She's our senior uh commissioner. So she gathered uh over a hundred of those that had um you know, toothpaste, pair of socks. Um, toothbrushes, some even had, you know, brushes. So we had a good handful of those. Um, they were really nice. They were really grateful for what they obtained. Uh, definitely shared that any uh food that is donated. Um canned foods and goods um are also greatly appreciated. So the new commission is actually gonna be uh doing another. Drive, but doing a food drive um gathering in the next couple of months. So not only during the holiday where everybody feels in the spirit, but also doing something in the spring going into the summer. Um, so that we can go and do another donation for them. So be on the lookout for that.
And maybe we could even work this into something that can help the folks down in Southern California too. Might be, although I don't think they need a whole lot of coats right now, but. It's always something that's there except for last week. Um. Yeah, so the rest of the youth commission um talked about. Having our ice cream social on May the sixth. Is that correct? I think that's our first meeting of May. So this this event is to celebrate the city's birthday, which is right behind me. On May the fourteenth.
Fourteen, I think I was.
And uh so Lisa, I don't know. Have you ever attended one of these before?
The ice cream social?
But yeah, yeah. So we're gonna do it again. It was, I thought it was a big success. Last year, we had, I don't know, we had a. A a full council chamber here and the ice cream was delicious. So we're going to do it again. And uh. We're also looking at having a youth commission. Podcast, so we're working on that. And if you have any ideas, please send them to me and. If one of you would like to be interviewed by our youth commission, they might be interested in doing that too. So get a chance to become famous on on YouTube or something. So since their li- library JPA, I attended the finance committee. Meeting and our finances are are in great shape right now, so everything went pretty smoothly there. And uh West Valley Mayor Managers and. Santa Clara County Mayors and Mayor's Group will all be upcoming. And I have nothing else. Well, no, I do have one more thing to report. I did attend Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting. For uh Councilmember Beckinjohn, and it was a very disappointing meeting because they were voting on fulfilling. Some of the different committees for the group and out of um. And and the particular committee that Councilmember Beckinjohn wanted to be on, and he was on before, and he's done. So many great things for this organization, even before he was on the council. He was. Involved in it as soon as the FBCE was born. And uh and he was not chosen to be on the executive committee again. And even though a couple of other members spoke in favor of him, um. Yeah, it was just very disappointing. Uh, the the results of that, so that's actually my last meeting as an alternate. Councilmember Shannon will be taking over from there and uh. I don't know, maybe find out, please.
What's going on?
What's going on, or pick him in the blood and say, what the heck did you guys do?
Yeah.
I mean, I I really thought that he was a shoe-in for that position. So. I'm sorry, Brian. And that concludes our committee commissioner reports, and now we'll have council member comments. So anybody have a comment that they would like to make?
Um, I've got some comments and some future agenda items.
Okay, now we'll hold on for that. Uh, but I think the council member comments were to be before the city managers reported it.
Yeah, so we got comments, then city manager report, then future agenda.
My answer is council member comments, thanks.
Yes. That's right.
Right here, council member comments.
Oh, okay, sorry. We've got the city managers quarterly report and then the city managers report, right, okay. My confusion. Uh.
Did you want to wait for futures indictments or did you want to make the comment?
Uh. Yeah, I I wanted to make a comment that I'm very much looking forward to working with Councilmember Shannon. On uh. On the ad hoc finance committee. I think that there's uh much work that needs to be done, and I'm very much looking forward to. Uh, working with with Councilmember Shannon on that. Um, my other comment is that um. I spoke with uh the town manager at La Salto's Hills. And uh we're going to uh. If we want to get some information from them. It will have to be through, not through a council member, but through uh a staff member. And or a consultant. But they wanted to put forth uh. The the town manager. Said, here's the way the process has to work. So I've contacted a council member at La Salto's Hills, and so hopefully. That will move forward and we'll be able to leverage some of their, some of their uh expertise. Um, and then I've got some. Well, my other comment is, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, that tomorrow I'm going to Sacramento. I think several of us are going to Sacramento. I'm going there tomorrow morning and I'm coming back in the afternoon or in the evening. And I'm meeting at ten thirty with uh um Assembly Member Pellerin, Gail Pellerin. And then at one thirty with Senator Dave Cortese, and then at four P M with Senator Josh Becker. I've got an agenda uh prepared where I'm gonna ask. Make comments for maybe ten minutes on. On what's happening in the area here and in the JPAs that I'm on. And then allow them to speak for twenty minutes on what their priorities are. Because it's like, you know, what are the citizens of Monte Sereno and and other constituents saying? That has to be done in Sacramento, and what are you gonna do in Sacramento that you'd like to be communicated back to? That the constituents that I'm that I've got. With which both include the city and the JPAs. Um. And I did wanna say that I will mention. Fire, safety, and evacuation routes to each one of those members that I speak to. Um, so those are my council member comments.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Any other council members that have any comments?
Um, I have a question for Brian. Are you gonna bring up the housing element at all?
Uh, I am going to be silent on the housing element. There's. I've been coached by Ben Chank, who's the government relations uh. Person for SBCE, and then also uh today I met with um. Uh, Sean McNeil, uh, who is the. For lack of a better term, he works for Cal CCA. And he is their person on the ground in Sacramento. So he gave me some coaching on what to say. And, you know, how to put a deal with, because I've never been to. Uh Sacramento before. I've never been to the capital and gone through and seen people. He did say, he, Sean said. He said. You're very fortunate to have these people agree to meet with you. He says sometimes, you know, it's difficult for, quote lobbyists. To speak with people.
Oh, they're so hard to get in touch with.
So anyways, that's, those are my comments. If you have, do you have any other questions?
No, just back to the theory on that.
We'll be across the street. Want to come over and say hi? I do know that um Josh Becker is holding a reception at our hotel. I think it's, did you take that email?
I did not.
I think it's at eight o'clock tomorrow night. At the uh at the Jerry. So if if you had left by then. We'll, we'll.
I'll be gone by then.
It is only for mayors.
Yeah, it's, all right, so.
I'll have a one-on-one with them.
Okay, yeah, you're gonna have a one-on-one. So let's uh, Diana, do you have another minor or mini city manager report now?
I do want.
Okay.
I've reported for three weeks.
So then I think the next agenda item is future agenda items. And I'm sure somebody's going to say, you talk about fire. And I I I bring that up and I'm kind of preempting it because. I think that this would be a great topic that we could really flush out at our upcoming strategic uh goals meeting. Instead of making it a particular agenda item, unless. But, you know. That's just an idea that I wanted to throw out there real fast before we actually tried to make it a specific agenda item.
Good. Um, I heard a lot of passion and concern. That I haven't really heard before um in these chambers. I mean, the housing element was. Was one thing, but but this is personal safety and and to hear about. In these chambers, I mean, the housing element was was one thing, but but this is personal safety and and to hear about. Ms. Lawler's experience with Pacific Palisades. I mean, that was just, you know, that was difficult. And I think that what we need to do is to consider having some involvement from our very. Passionate and compassionate residents in terms of some sort of fire safety commission. Or something like that. We can talk about it in the strategic goal setting, but. You know, it's it's there right now and I'm also wondering how it fits with the Better Streets Commission. And, you know, maybe there's there's a crossover there, you know, with some of the, some of the issues that. Ms. Seidler raised. So somehow we could, if we could do something, I think by trying to push it off. We're not gonna catch that 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 passion and the interest in the, you know, so.
Okay, so I was thinking that we're going to have the fire department here. And first meeting in March. And then we have our goal setting meeting. And then the eighteenth, the eighteenth, and then at that point, we can start. Taking a look at forming committees and recruiting members for them. But I I was, I was thinking that the kickoff should really be to get. As much of the public here to talk with the Santa Clara County Fire, let them kind of talk about their plans. And what they feel that the city needs to be doing and then I think we'll have more information. On how we can best move forward at that point, instead of us trying to preempt them. And say, great, we're gonna start this commission. And and get them moving on something just for the fire department to show up and say, well, no, I don't really want to be doing this. And but I mean, this is all gonna happen very, very quickly over the next few weeks.
Oh, okay. I also am sensitive to Councilmember Wolchimer's. Observation that everything's very fragmented and and you need someone. To be driving it and pulling the different pieces together and maybe that's. Part of the role that some committee could could play, but but I I hear what your point and. Provided that timing, you think that is acceptable to our residents, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, and and looking forward in schedule, which I don't. Our calendar. We don't have a calendar on this one or?
It's in the package.
It's in the packet. Oh, well, you'll see that we we will have some room in the March and April timeframes. That we can build committees and and try to find out what we want the the goal of committees to be.
So then maybe the. The communication to our residents is something along the lines of, you know, we're gonna be. Dealing with this at the at the fourth, is that when the?
That's when the fire department.
Right, and then we're gonna be explicitly addressing how to operationalize it and our strategic planning so that they. They see, oh, okay, council heard us, you know, this is important to them and they understand us now. What what are they doing? Exactly.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I I have the same thing written down, actually, that that you just mentioned, the fire safety commission. Not at all committed, but the commission, because the problem is going to be with us. Forever, it's never going away. So coming back to the frustration that I expressed earlier. This is really true. Last year after the Maui fires. I contacted the 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 board of supervisors here. I contacted Josh Becker about emails, about voicemails. Nothing, absolutely nothing, silence. I asked Josh Becker, who is all the committee that oversees Caltrans. To ask Caltrans to come take a look at Highway nine here. Nothing. So I'm extremely skeptical. I'm skeptical by nature about this top, about this topic. I'm very skeptical. My my worst case prediction is that nothing's gonna happen.
Well, hopefully the blowback that's happening to collective officials in Southern California is going to wake up. Close in Sacramento. I I I'm trying to be optimistic.
Here it's got to go.
But.
Yes, I think the fire department really has to take the lead on it. To say, okay, these streets need to be cut. And and we're gonna do it and we need to support them to do whatever is obviously should be done.
But they weren't here. They've been here.
Yeah, but this this is.
Every quarter.
And I brought out Highway nine.
Yeah, every time.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting the the hook from the city attorney where we're kind of.
We're getting into contact.
We're kind of running in, we're actually running the agenda item right now. So so I think what I'm hearing from everybody is that we want to have an agenda item and. A a plan going forward will be, let's get as much of the public here on the court, listen to the fire department. Talk about it at our strategic meeting and then we'll have an actual agenda item. At at which point the formation of a commission, because the commission is ongoing, correct?
So if you're gonna appoint. Citizen members, it's gonna be subject to the Brown Act, so it will be a. Required to have noticed public meetings, all of that. It can last for as long as you want. It can last indefinitely. It's, you will create it. And so you can decide how how you want it to.
Okay, so it'll be on the same level as the youth commission and the site and architecture commission, et cetera?
It could be, it could be, or it could be something more temporary. Depending on, there's a specific task or things like that.
Okay, so so it could also be part of it, like the Better Street Commission could be expanded.
Could be, yeah.
To find streets and get it out of the town when there's a fire.
You could expand their their responsibilities.
Something like that could be considered also.
I believe the Better Streets Commission is now only meeting twice a year. And I don't know if I totally understood that this would be an agenda item for the next meeting or it would not be an agenda item for several meetings. Then my only concern is that how do we communicate, as you know, Brian said, how do we communicate this to the resident?
So what I'm going to discuss with our city managers, that we have a series of email blasts over the next. Few weeks just to keep everybody apprised about what we're doing to address. The concern that 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 we've heard. Through through the recent, I mean. I've been getting emails for the last three weeks about this. So and I know Councilmember Avery and I. Kind of formed an unofficial Brown Act buddy connection here because he was on the email chain also. And I've been forwarding them to Diana and and I'm sure we're gonna get more of them after tonight's meeting.
If if I missed it, the initial message you gave was really good. Maybe you could send that out as a newsletter. As part of everyone sending out, you know, the very message on the fire and all that. Pretty comprehensive, you can. I I get a Diana.
Okay, thank you. I did act a little bit, but yeah.
And thank you for your comments about it at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. I'm glad you all liked it. All right, so do we have any other future agenda items that we would like to propose? If not, I'm going to thank everybody for all their hard work tonight. Thank you all, staff, Ron. We're gonna meet you and I adjourn our meeting for tonight and we'll see everybody on February the fourth. Right.